Ask the council if I can bring public comments up before number two to kind of arrange something a bit. Public comments is number three. Public two and three. Take it. There's going to be a lot of questions what I forward. Presentation I want to address was not on the public vote. I want to be able to grant that's specific to those questions. Two of the panelists in number two. Is that okay with the council?
Yes.
All right. Now we all rise and say.
I'm going to be the supervisor of the United States of America and the Republic on which stands one nation under individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And ask everybody to please silence their cell phone so we don't have any interruptions in the meeting. We are going to move now to the public comment section of this. Public comments, this is time for public comments regarding items that are not on the agenda or items that are consent agenda. Public comments period is not intended to be a question and answer period or conversations with the council or city staff. Council members when recognized by the mayor make ask questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken during the city council during public comment section of this meeting. So this is time for public comments on things that's not on the agenda or on the special presentation.
Hello, Buzzzy McCloskey. I live on Northridge Drive. I would just like to address cancel and everybody else here about our swimming pool situation. I know we've been working, had several couple meetings here with our city manager and our splash organization and the group that worked super hard on getting this grant, knowing full well that it was going to cost us a tax of some kind to keep the pool going. We had, you know, arranged or had in the works a recreation department with a partial tax or some kind of a tax on the city, myself included, knowing that that's how we're going to have to pay for this. I realize folks are just really focusing on the pool and not the whole park situation and what it would do to help all the other parks that are in the city. So I just wanted to give my endorsement or whatever you want to call it for the go ahead on this pool. And the park situation that we would have up there. I hope that everybody is getting all the information. I know that we are putting together lots more information to give to the city, to the council members on the research that our little organization did. Thank you, Robin. To get all that taken care of.
Holly Vander. Join the meeting.
It will be an extremely beneficial new thing to our, to our city. For those that had been involved in the pool before it went defunct, we brought in a lot of money to the city, you know, with our big swim meets and whatnot that we had and you may not ever, ever use the swimming pool, but there will be hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands of people that will use that swimming pool in the months that we will have. The benefits greatly, I think outweigh the negatives with that kind of thing that we have proposed to have up there. The park and the pool, I just believe would be a great benefit and I hope we, you know, go forward with our big grant and find a way to help that make its way through. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. We're into love. I knew this was going to happen. Taxes. You're going to raise taxes for something non-essential. We don't have enough police to patrol the streets. People are complaining about thefts, vandalism, but we don't have enough police. We don't have money for the police. We don't have money for a homeless shelter. People are out there in the cold. But we're going to raise taxes for a swimming.
Join the meeting.
Why do we need a swimming pool? Why is that more important than police protection? Why is it more important than roads? Why is it more important than a homeless shelter? This is pointless. This is going to bankrupt the city. We can't, homeowners cannot afford to pay yet more taxes for something most of them are not going to use. This is, this is wasteful spending. You should all be ashamed of yourselves. And this, this tax, they're going to present it as a parks tax, but almost all the money is going to go to the swim pool. Just like it was for the regular pool. It was presented as a special tax district for recreational history. But it was all going to go to the pool. Same with this. The other, the other perks, they're going to get cut back because there's no money for it. Shame on me.
Well, that'll be if there, if there is something presented to us as far as a tax form, which it has not been done yet. If there is, it'll be something that the citizens vote on as a whole. So thank you for your input. Oh, we got one online. Okay.
Hi, my name's Anderson. I work for the continuum of care. As part of the combating homelessness and I was just coming, calling in to give public comment and support of your Siski Crossroads housing development.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can you, can you hear me at all? This is the city manager, Jason Ledbetter. We are going to have public comment specific to that item. Here in a few minutes. And so we're just asking if people have public comment that is not not agendized to please come up at this time, but you'll have an opportunity shortly to discuss that item.
Okay, sorry about that.
No worries. Thank you. Okay.
I'm Steve Radford, 409 Evergreen. Yeah, I'm witness to how we cannot afford another park. And this proposal was not proposed by the, the pool people. It was proposed by the state.
Jessica Skilling.
They mandated what you will do as far as
Join the meeting.
And where you will put it. The state has got way too many fingers in our county as far as I'm concerned, way too many fingers in every county.
Crystal Jackson.
The real truth is that
Join the meeting.
We cannot afford another park. We can't take care of the parks we have, or if we are, we're barely, you know, we're doing it on a shoestring, you know, the, the gazebo up at Greenhorn is a good example of what we can't do with the city money. It's been sitting there deteriorating for years. You know, just an example of what, what happens with our city parks, you know, they do, they do, I mean, Greenhorn is a wonderful place and you guys work really hard on it, I know, but to have another park to even bigger, it sounds like with all these other amenities and stuff. Sounds ridiculous to me. We can't afford it yet. Maybe someday we can. But again, the pool belongs up there in the neighborhood where, where it's safe for the kids to get to and the high school to be able to use for swim meets. They don't have to cross the street like they built the whole gym so they didn't have to cross the street anymore. Now they're going to have to cross the street over here by the freeways, all the on ramps and off ramps. Plus this housing development with the mentally ill going right next to the swimming pool. That should put a big question into it right there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. All right. Any other public comments? Okay, then we will move on to the special presentations. The first one we'll go into is a Warricka Fire Department. Introduction to Kalen, Karen, excuse me, Williams Stan Shaw as applicant of the Warricka Fire Department. We have Chief Lemus here.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I'd like to introduce Karen Williams Stan Shaw is our newest member of the Warricka Volunteer Fire Department. She came to us here not long ago based on probably trying to compete with her husband, Josh, who's going to be a tough, tough one to beat. No, Josh is doing a great job and we welcome Karen. I see her as a great, a great asset to the department. So thank you.
Thank you. Come on down.
She's right back. She's got the, got the troops with her. So.
Thank you so much, Karen.
So anyway, we, she's, we already had a training and she participated and did a great job. So we're looking for, for good things.
Thank you for. Let's all get up there. I'll just do the handshake. That keep care of yourself. Awesome. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess so.
It's going to be a family affair.
I was watching. That's like a little too hot, huh? Okay. So now we'll move on to part B of this. It's Siski County Health and Human Services Agency, Siski Crossroads Housing Development. We have Sarah Kellard here, Dr. Sarah Kellard here. What I'm going to ask the members of the public is we're going to have, Dr. Sarah Kellard is going to give a presentation. We're going to, is Juliana going to, yes, Juliana is there. Juliana, our planning commissioner.
Director. Join the meeting.
Give a statement after that, and then I'm going to open it up for public comments at that point in time. So we'll have two presentations and then it'll be open for public comments and will be held to five minutes for the public comments. Thank you. Go ahead, Sarah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Sarah Kellard, Director of Health and Human Services. And I am joined on Zoom by RCHDC. So Jessica Johnson is a project manager for them. Beth Matsumoto, Matsumoto is the, she has a new title, Director of Multi-Family Housing and Ryan LaRue is the CEO. And they are the developers for this project. So they are here also to answer questions. So I have a PowerPoint. Hopefully. I am, and hopefully my dog chewed up my glasses, so I can't read this. Hopefully I'll be able to see that. I just haven't had time to get new ones. Okay. So as I said, Siski Crossroads is a partnership between the Behavioral Health Division of Health and Human Services and RCHDC Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation. Next slide, please. And as I think, as I think many of you know, the project is a 50 uni, 50 unit project. Forty-nine of those units are affordable housing units. Twenty-four of those are set aside for individuals experiencing homelessness in a supportive housing setting. Twenty-five units, the remaining 25 units will be, will be affordable housing for residents from the local workforce and/or seniors in the community. Supporting housing for individuals experiencing homelessness has been well researched and is an effective tool to end homelessness and promote independence. The project leverages millions of dollars, non-county dollars, to develop needed housing in our community. As many of you may also know, the state of California is providing a tremendous amount of funding for various housing projects. Health and Human Services Agency currently is administering 11 or 12 housing programs that house all types of people in the community. So from foster youth, families, individuals, elder individuals who are involved in the APS system, Adult Protective Services. So this is just one, and this I would say is the largest and most complex of the housing programs that we currently have, but we house hundreds of people every year in the community from the various populations that we serve. Next slide, please. So the supportive housing units for this project are funded by the No Place Like Home. This was a program, it's a statewide initiative. It was enacted in 2016 and it dedicates $2 billion in bond proceeds to invest in supportive, supportive housing for individuals who are homeless and experiencing mental illness. Siski County applied for and received $500,000 in a non-competitive allocation for No Place Like Home and $8,158,000, a little bit more than that in competitive funding. So the county was able to, through No Place Like Home, dedicate about $8.5 million to this project. Siski County selected, uh, next slide, please. Siski County Selected Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation as our development sponsor for the No Place Like Home project in July of 2020. After a request for qualifications process, RCHDC first presented at the Board Supervisors on October 6th of 2020 with a overview of the project and then entered into an exclusive negotiating rights agreement to purchase the property that I think you all know is up on Foothill Drive. So as you can imagine, a project like this is, takes, is very complex and we have been working on this for four or five years. And so there were many different steps to get us to this point. And so one of those was developing a 10-year plan to end, to address homelessness, which we did in 2019. I brought copies of that if anyone is interested. It's a countywide collaborative plan and it was also a threshold requirement. Sorry, next slide. Clearly can't do two things at once. A threshold requirement to apply for the No Place Like Home Fund. So this plan, I will say, is a little bit out of date. We are in the process of getting ready to apply for additional funding, different, different funding, but also requires a plan. And so Madeline will be working on that plan this spring. We also conducted a site feasibility study. So we looked at sites throughout the county, primarily along the I-5 corridor and selected the Foothill site. It, it met the requirements for this project in terms of access to services and other types of supports. We also applied for and received funding from Partnership Health Plan, the Mental Health Services Act, HAP and PLHA, which I know is, is funding that's been discussed here as well. Next slide, please. Supportive housing combines affordable housing and services and it's designed for people with serious mental illness or other disabilities that need support to live stably in the community. It's housing with no, no predetermined time limit. So individuals who enter supported housing can stay there as long as they like. The residents have a regular lease where they pay rent and have the same rights and responsibilities of anyone who's renting housing. The services, behavioral health has a 20-year commitment to provide supportive services onsite at this project. Services can include case management, substance use or mental health treatment, assistance in locating and maintaining employment, life skills, training, education, et cetera. It's a proven solution. There was an earlier iteration of this type of, it was MHSA funding. These types of projects were developed in larger counties many years ago. So there is a lot of data on, on this type of project and it's been proven to you know, solve homelessness for this, this population. It's also been proven to be very cost effective. So as you can imagine, there are many components, next slide, please, that make these types of projects successful. And as I said, behavioral health has a 20-year commitment to provide onsite services. And the minimum services that we will be offering to the project will be case management. Each No Place Like Home resident will have a case manager assigned to them. We provide peer support services, an array of mental health, traditional mental health services such as counseling, therapy groups, substance abuse services, support in linking people to healthcare, including preventive care, dental care, medication management and wellness services. We provide or will, there will be provided benefits counseling, including helping individuals access different kinds, you know, medical, enrolling in medical and those types of services. And then we also help people with basic housing retention skills such as unit maintenance, upkeep, laundry, money management and tenant skills. Next slide, please. And our partnership on this project with RCHDC extends beyond their develop, they're developing the actual housing. They have a team that includes a property management division. So one of the units on the site will be occupied by a property manager. And RCHDC is responsible for screening applicants in partnership with us, engaging residents to ensure compliance with the lease terms. They'll provide activities that promote a sense of community among the residents. They'll maintain the property to the standards required by the funders and investors. They'll meet with us, the county staff on a regular basis and they'll ensure the long-term viability of the property as a community asset. Next slide, please. So this is a picture of a similar project, a bit smaller, that RCHDC developed in Humboldt County, Arcade Bay Crossing. Next slide, please. It's a very similar project in that it's 31 units, 15 are set aside for homeless individuals with mental illness and the other 16 are for qualified low-income housing households. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, there was an earlier iteration of this type of housing and so several counties have, have brought this how, this type of housing up and, and have it running. I'm not sure what, what funded this project in Plumas County, but as you can see, the outcomes, and these are very similar outcomes across these projects, but this is an example from, you know, our community not dissimilar to our own. So over the two-year period, 2017 to 2019, 20 clients, there was a hundred percent decrease in admissions to psychiatric treatment and substance use treatment facilities. 63% decrease in the total number of incarcerations. The number of clients on probation decreased by 50%. Unwarranted visits to the hospital emergency rooms decreased by 85%. The number of clients who maintained or gained income through employment or other types of benefits was 30%. And 66% of clients moved from this transitional program to permanent living arrangement. So this program is somewhat different than the program we're developing because ours is permanent and this is transitional. But part of the goal for us, for all of us who are developing permanent supported housing is to move people who are able into market-based housing or other subsidized housing as they stabilize and become, you know, more engaged in the community. So next slide, I think actually the next slide is blank. So it might be two. Yes. Next slide, please. So permanent supported housing has many proven benefits. It improves lives by decreasing homelessness. It has positive effects on housing stability, employment, earnings and health outcomes. It generates cost savings to public systems, including hospitals, shelters, ERs, jails and prisons. And it benefits the greater community by providing more safety for everyone as, as residents are integrated back into the community. Next slide, please. So outcomes with supportive housing, the studies show, and some of these aren't really applicable to Siski County at this point, since we don't have a shelter. But there's a significant decrease in the proportion of time spent in homelessness. There's a decline in the number of shelter days used. There's reduced emergency shelter cost. Studies show that 73 to 93% of residents stay housed after one year, 14 to 18 accident, exit to transitional or institutional settings and 10 to 15 exit to permanent housing. So all funding in California at this point comes with housing first principles. Housing first, next slide, please. Housing first principles include housing is placed, housing placement is viewed as the first intervention, but not the only intervention. Housing is a foundation of stability that is then used to help people take advantage of supportive services, including all of those that I mentioned earlier. It uses a trauma-informed approach to helping people stabilize their lives and gain independence. Services are offered, services that are offered are tailored to the individual needs. It address, it addresses ending the cycle between jails, hospitals, shelters and streets, which I think all of us see in our community as well as others. And it's been demonstrated to be less expensive than allowing people to remain homeless. Next slide, please. So housing first promotes housing stability and wellbeing. People with a foundation of a home are better positioned to take advantage of supportive services. They have the stability in which to engage in job search. They have the platform they need to provide care and continuity for their young children. They have the safety housing affords that allows them to want to address traumatic experiences with a skilled practitioner and to do so in a safe environment. And they have a safe place to store medication and address their health and mental health needs. Next slide, please. Housing first successes. Clients in the housing first model access housing faster and are more likely to remain stably housed. The majority of them are, the majority of them participate in the services that are offered, including job training programs, school and discontinued substance abuse, fewer instances, instances of domestic violence and they spend fewer days hospitalized. One study found an average of cost savings on emergency services of $31,545 per person housed in a housing first program over the course of two years. And another study showed that housing first program, that a housing first program could cost up to $23,000 less per client per year than a shelter program. Next slide. Bless you. So in summary, the No Place Like Home program is providing funding for the development of 24 supportive housing units. RCHDC has leveraged millions of dollars in other funding, including tax credits to support the development of the other 25 affordable units. Permanent supporting housing, supported housing is a combination of affordable housing and services for people who need supports. Housing first is an approach and framework for ending homelessness by putting housing at the front of intervention. The county will provide supportive services for 20 years, including behavioral health case management, counseling and other types of services to the tenants of the No Place Like Home units. And RCHDC will manage the property as an asset and provide an onsite property manager who will coordinate closely with the county as well as provide general resident services. RCHDC's property management unit will also maintain the property. So it sounds like Juliana is going to speak.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Much appreciate that. All that information is a lot.
Sure. And the homeless land is there.
Yeah, there's, I think so.
Hi, thank you. So I'm just going to briefly bring up, we prepared a memo, I believe council member McCoy had brought up at the last meeting requesting information regarding the planning process of this project as well as the zoning designation for that property. So just to summarize it for members of the public, the zoning for the property is a combination of high density residential and light industrial. The light industrial portion is closer to the east side of the property and not part of this project. So that is at the further end and may still develop in the future. So part of the R3 high density residential is allowable uses are the transitional and supportive housing uses that are discussed in this presentation. So they're what are called a use by right, which means that they do not require any additional permitting from the planning commissioner, city council to move forward with their development. So that would be similar to say a single family home in the low density residential does not need to go in front of planning commission. So that's what those use by rights are. And so the city of Wairega received a site plan application on May 17th of 2021 for this project. The site plan review requirement is part of our zoning code, which is title 16. And so that requires any multi housing and commercial development to submit a site plan to comply with different infrastructure and landscaping standards. So that we can work through that process with our public works department as well as our building department. So they were approved by the city back in June 9th. They were approved with no conditions outside of our our general regulations. And so after that, we do have an appeal process of that. It's a, excuse me, section 16.14.020 of the Wairega municipal code. And basically what it is, is because it is an administrative site plan permit, people may appeal that decision to the planning commission is the next step. And then after that, the city council, which satisfies the rights of the fifth amendment of the constitution under due process. And that timeframe is 45 days after the decision by staff. We did not receive any appeals at that time. And so therefore the appeal process has closed for the project. So at at this point, there is no planning application that can be repealed or appealed to the city council. The only action that people can approach is judicial judicial action at this point. So they would have to take us to court and make a basis on that and bring suit to the city. At this point, based on the information, a public comment or public sentiment about a project has not stood in court in terms of a reason to deny a project such as this, which is a use by right. So we just wanted to clarify that for you. There there was that process followed. I was not here for the approval of that site plan, but we did take a look at the records for that and it was done through a legal process. And just wanted to clear that up since that was some of the questions there. And if you have any other questions about the process for development, be happy to address those.
Thank you, Juliana, for that clarification. So now we're, unless we have some more information, I'm going to go into the public comments section of this. And open it up for public comments. Please, please, everybody, if you would state your name and address, if you do so wish to.
Yeah, Jonathan Andrews, I'm with Fairchild Medical Center. And I'll just jump in here first, if that's okay. Just three quick comments and appreciate that presentation by Sarah. First, on behalf of the hospital, I just want to express our absolute support for this type of project. You know, we work very closely with patients every day. We recognize the relationship between one's physical health and one's mental health. And you know, we, the work we do in terms of the physical health, the medical care is actually a very small portion of one's overall health and it's well documented that one's overall health, about 20% access to medical care. 80%, you know, behaviors, lifestyle, other social determinants like housing. So when we work very hard to provide the physical and medical care to an individual, it's extremely important that we can discharge them to a program like this where some of their social needs will be met. It can be housed. They can have the structure to receive some of the support that they need. And so that would be the first, my first comment, just the absolute support from on behalf of the the hospital for this type of project. Secondly, I'm a resident. I live on Foothill Drive. And you know, I think it's a perfect location for a program like this. It's it's high density housing. There's already units there. I have absolutely no concerns about that location as a resident that lives on Foothill Drive. And thirdly, I think I just want to, I just want to maybe just share that maybe the the opinions that matter most are the ones we're not going to hear. Maybe the voices that we need to hear, the ones that are not here tonight. Generally, the the population is going to benefit from a program like this. It's a silent population. Their voices go unheard. I see this over and over and over and it saddens me over the years because, you know, we all work for an equitable society, a fair society. And the reality is, I think for this population is there still remains some gross inequities and unfairness. And in large part, they are unheard and their needs go unmet. And so I just want to just maybe close with that comment, that let's think about the voices you're not hearing. The people that are going to use this program and really benefit from this program. Because too often they go unheard and I hope that we can all go forward with a renewed commitment to make sure that there's fairness. And I want to also just emphasize, I think if we did hear from them, that it's not just the fact that the program would come to fruition and be accessible, but timing is of the essence. We cannot hold this kind of a program up. These folks need help now. And so I I think that's an important aspect of it as well.
Thank you, Jonathan. And I thank you for that point because those individuals, we have spoken with them. Mr. McCoy, Sarah Springfield, a lot of my volunteers that we went out and did the point in time count did speak with these individuals. And there is a huge deed for these individuals. This is the only way some of these individuals are going to get out of the predicament that they are in is to have a hand up. And not a handout, but a hand up. And that's, this is one of the first steps for some of these individuals to get that hand up is to have some type of housing for them. And like I said, with the great volunteers I had for the point in time count, they they will contest to that immensely that a lot of those individuals were looking, they have a job, they just have no place to stay. And there is a number of individuals we spoke with. And I got a pile of of people that said that we have, we did a another survey after the point in time count that asked some of these individuals, you know, what kind of help they would like to receive. Housing was like number one. They wanted to see some type of housing. They they didn't have any housing. There was no need. There was nothing for them out there. That's why they're living in a tent. And yes, I know there's going to be a lot of people that are going to speak and saying that they have other problems. Yes, there is, but they're supportive. That's what the whole, this whole housing is for them, some type of support system. So sorry. This is open for public comments, so please come forward.
My name is Steve Young. I'm a temporary resident of Wairega. All due respect to the speakers, understand that I have no degree. I'm a layman. But I represent a segment of this society. I live, or actually I worked 20 and 21 in Skid Row, Los Angeles. I know of what I speak. There are homeless, three kinds, the one that lost their job, the one that's drug dependent. And the other one can't qualify for the job because they're they're dangerous. You even mentioned that. Most facilities that you showed up there, the people on Yama Street don't have. They work for a living. And they don't live in that picture that you showed them. This isn't Eric Garcetti putting out a billion dollars in downtown Los Angeles. I'm seeing those high rises go up. Now you talk about custodian, if they can't take care of College of the Siskus, you think they're going to take care of that? They'll have that trashed up. Listen, they have problems. We know that. And there's doctors out there, stuff, but you're giving away a program. You might be happy giving away your program. I would support a pool. I would much rather give it to the children of this city than to a bunch of people that don't have it because they made bad choices in life. That's their problem. You make a bad choice, you pay for it. That's just the way it is. In Africa, which I served in northern Kenya, if you didn't work, you starved to death. The tribe didn't take you on. I guarantee you this, you go ahead with this program. And you will, you will, it will never be as good as the day you opened it up. It's going to be a money hole like there's no tomorrow. And when a child gets hurt in this town because of them, those that approved it, it sits on your shoulders, gentlemen, ladies. It just is. And there's no win here. We're not big enough of a town. Now, I did have a council member tell me that the circus, the ninth circus court of appeals basically tied our hands. So I was going to recommend that you open up a new zoning and leave them up there by colleges, Siskus, give it a two T rating, temporary tent housing, and make them pay a small token or at least check in so we know who's citizen we're we're holding here. And law enforcement, gosh, I feel for you guys. I have a bunch of needles at my shop right now. I could go into the needle business. Because they stop, they get their drugs and they do them. And they, but I will give them my credit for creditors too. They are hard workers because when you go to sleep at night, they wake up. They mill around and that's when stuff gets stolen. That's when cars get broken into. And oh, but that's okay. They're expressing themselves. Like I said, I'm a layperson, but I'm telling you exactly what it is. LA Skid Row is out of control. This will do the same thing, just a smaller segment and you're asking for it. So if you're going to put them, put them in an area, put up a security fence that they cannot get out into the public if they're mentally dangerous. Help us protect us from mentally deranged. Riverside County dumped their mental patients into the streets of LA 10 years ago. And boy, I got LA City pretty, pretty upset. You had your people in prison being dumped out on the streets. No word said about it. And the public paid for it. Anyway, thank you very much. You're going down the wrong road, gentlemen, ladies. Thank you.
I'm Maria. And I live here in Wairega on Fourth Street. And I understand that this isn't anything council has done. It is in fact with the county. So my question is, if you knew about this in 2016, why are we just hearing about it now? And then also, what happens? You keep saying 20 years, 20 years, you're responsible for 20 years. What about after 20 years? I think it's great. I'm not saying it's not. I'm just feeling the sneakiness biting me in the butt and I'm not happy. You know, and the regular residents that you're going to put 25 of 25 units, how are they feeling? Like in Arcata where it's already happening, were they nervous about being in a place where there's maybe mental people? And do they have children? And are these mental people, people who may in fact be also child molesters with children? These are questions I have and I would like answered. Thank you.
So just to reiterate too, Jason's taking down these questions. And we'll address them at the towards end of public comments. That way they are addressed. And we'll go from there, but we're not going to go back and forth like I was doing this earlier. We're not going to do that. So we're going to have all the questions addressed at the end. So thank you. Soon as Lorenzo's done, there's another one on this, on the Zoom. So go ahead and run.
My concern is the one thing Ms. Clark did not mention, transportation. Most of these people won't have cars. And it's an hour's walk to the hospital, to to grocery store, to anywhere from that location. An hour's walk for a healthy person. Most of these people can't walk that far. What's going to be done for transportation? Don't say the stage because the stage is unreliable at its best. There has to be some means of these people getting where they need to go. Or we can just give them your phone number and they can call you.
Okay, now it's Arthur, the somebody on the on Zoom. There are three. Okay, let's start off with whatever one you bring up.
Hi, my name is Keith Anderson. I work for Shaft County Housing and Community Action Agency. We are the lead agency for the Northern Northern California Community of Care, which Siskiyou County is a part of. So I was just calling in to voice my support for this housing project. Like Sarah had mentioned, the data and formal decisions that people are making, the data backs up that this is a good plan. In areas that this has been attempted and succeeded in, the cost per citizen goes down. It reduces the amount of public service support with your police force. It reduces the amount of hospital visits. It increases the health sufficiency of the homeless population because your your homeless population is not going to go away. You know, whether you build this and house them or not, they're still going to be in your town. And so the best solution is to house people and get them the help and support services that they need. And this project would would help make that happen. And so I just wanted to voice my support for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Matthew Bryan. I'm not a resident of Wairega currently. I'm a resident of Dunsmere and on the Dunsmere City Council, currently serving as the mayor. And I was just calling into this meeting because it came to my attention that the project under discussion was coming up tonight. And I would like to thank the county for all their work in developing this and congratulate the city of Wairega. I think this is an enormous step forward for our entire county and the nine jurisdictions within it and look forward
Join the meeting.
Future developments in the other towns. And I'd also like to add, I'm a realtor and a small time landlord myself. So I know firsthand that creation of housing units in the lower end sector of income or even middle range is non existent right now. The cost just doesn't make it worthwhile to produce lower income housing or even middle income housing. So I think this is the only effective way of increasing our housing supply. And I think it's a very important first step. And congratulate the city of Wairega for being a part of this.
Thank you for your input. One more before we go.
Yep, my name is Tara Ames. I live at 905 Campbell Avenue in Wairega. I know that we're not going to have the voice of the people tonight that are going to be living in this apartment, whether that's in the low income area or as people who have mental illness. So I wanted to share my own story because I think that there's a lot of stigma and misinformation about what mental illness is. Not everybody that has mental illness is you know, somebody that is going to hurt somebody or do bad in our community. The truth is, is that a lot of people have mental illness. When I first started school, I was homeless. And the only way that I got out of that was somebody giving me a hand up and they let me live in a 14 foot travel trailer that didn't have power or water so that I can start going to school. I finished my bachelor's degree in social work and I did my my honors project on on substance abuse options for people that didn't want to do AA. I also then went on to do my master's degree in social work and I did my thesis project on homeless youth for housing them. We know all of the evidence shows that permanent supportive housing is what people need to be able to change and be successful citizens. They they don't need, you know, everything paid for them. They just need the support and the resources available to them. Since I came to your community three years ago, I've helped to bring millions of dollars to the county to help serve these people that didn't cost you any tax money. I just hope that, you know, that voice can be heard, that people with mental illness are not evil. They're they're great people. We know in our other programs that when you stabilize somebody with housing, that the rest of their life completely changes. So I just wanted to clear up that stigma. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Thank you for all your service for the county too. You've been great for helping people out. Thank you. Steve.
Steve. Steve Bradford, 409 Evergreen. It's no, there's no question that the people of community, community, any community will help to support the community in whatever way it can help in, in supporting people of need. That's always been the way of the people. It's just in the, it's our makeup. It's who we are. In the Bible, it says, "God helps those who helps themselves," though. And that's something I, I believe in tremendously. I've seen in my seventy years on this planet, how welfare programs do not help people. Look at, if you just, you know, be honest with yourselves and just look at what's happened over the last sixty years, the welfare program has gotten worse, not better. The ghettos have not gotten any better. The welfare program itself, that was started, started out in, in nineteen sixty to be a hand up, is now existent four-year, four generations. And it's not gotten any worse, better. It's gotten worse. Now we have homeless. Because of all that welfare, we have all these drugs, possibly. You know, I'm not no statistical person who knows it all by statistics. But a lot of these statistics, I would say, are lies, because they're put down by California, which is a communist state. California is trying to run all these counties, where the counties run the state. That's in the way the Constitution is built. The cities run the counties, the counties run the state. The state does not mandate down to the counties how you're going to do your homeless or your, your low-income housing. We live right next to a low-income housing over on Evergreen, and there's drugs fluent all over that place. In fact, when I moved there twelve years ago, it was green grass, nice, taken care of. There was a groundskeeper taking care of it, really nice. It looked nice. Now it's, it's dried up, the trees are just going crazy. I mean, I was involved with them, because I'm next, right next door, and I would, you know, we'd talk about trimming the trees and stuff like that. And there was a couple guys there twelve years ago that were on the payroll and, you know, continually paying for it, or continually taking care of the place. They haven't had that steady thing happening since, I don't know, maybe eight, nine years now. And now it's brown grass, and, you know, it's going to pop. I am a product of the state. I was raised in boys' homes. I was, since the time I was three years old, I was in foster homes and, and I worked in a, in, I was in a boys' home. Thank God, it was, it was a private-funded place by the Qantas and Hollywood people. We had Christmases you would not believe. But the state took it over, and it went down to nothing. The state does not help the people. It just takes away your freedom and your rights and promises all these things. This thing sounds ideal. But the evidence shows that these places do not stand up to, to time. You know, the, the, the welfare system makes more welfare, and that's what the globalists, that's what the New World Order, that's what Agenda Twenty-One is. That's what this program is. It's about control of the people. We can't have that. We're, we're Americans. We fought for our freedom. I'm a Vietnam combat vet. I cannot stand to have this kind of a community in, in where I live. If this continues on, and you're going to be a socialist community, I'm out of here. I'm moving. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Hello.
Hi. My name is Tracy Lima. I'm a Maricón resident. I live on West Center Street. I'm also the clinical director at Behavioral Health. And I'm here to speak about a few things about this housing project. Nobody here needs to say anything, but you, there are mentally ill sitting in this room. Any of you who have ever taken a mental health medication, had an anxiety issue, had a little too much sadness because, because somebody died, you can be classified as mentally ill. Mentally ill are not necessarily your criminals. I have been working with behavioral health for the last twenty years in this community. I have worked with your children. I have worked with your adults, and I have worked with your criminal population. And providing housing is the right thing to do. I see the homeless across the street from my building every day. I see people that die. I have seen two people die in my last ten years here that were homeless, had nowhere to go. I think as a community, it is our responsibility to create this housing structure so that our fellow humans have a place to put their head down that isn't in the mud. This community needed a shelter, right? In the midst of one of the last snowstorms. What did we do on the Siskiess Grapevine? How many people were screaming that Maricón needed to do something? Behavioral Health stepped up. Health and Human Services stepped up and took care of the community. This is yet another example of taking care of our fellow human. That's what we do. So I just want to cast my support for this project. Yes, I'm going to be somebody that's going to be finding employees to do the work. And we'll find it. We have people already doing the work. We are already housing people in Maricón. They are among you. You shop among them. They are human beings like anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that point, that you guys are already housing a lot of those individuals right now through, through vouchers, through motels and stuff like that. A lot of individuals are getting already housed through that. So thank you for making that point.
Hi, Celia Baldry, the one that started up on Grapevine. I live on Evergreen. Everybody, this whole program, it does sound like a good program to help these people, and I'm all for that. I, I realize that of our homeless, they are the ones that seriously need to be helped. One thing that keeps getting left out of the wording is seriously mentally ill, and that is, I, I wish that you would have explained what that was, and that's people that are schizophrenic. They have psychotic episodes, and yes, and deep depression and bipolar. They are great if they're on their medications and not doing drugs and alcohol. The drugs around here, what, meth and heroin and marijuana? But my biggest concern is the families that are being placed in with this group as they're trying to find themselves and be detoxed or just finding their way, getting onto their medications, getting off of their drugs. There's not been any, speaking of children, what about the kids that are growing up in that atmosphere? Can you imagine? You, twenty-four different seriously mentally ill people in your, in your yard? How do you play outside? It, it just, it haunts me at night. Okay, I found out about this program last year, I think it was, when I was on the pool planning grant thing and the steering committee with that, and it was brought up at, when we went out to look at the site, and I looked into what, you know, place like Home was, and I thought, that can't be right. I read it like ten times, what that site said, and I'm just like, that can't be right. Sent it off to my mom. Mom, what do you think about this? She goes, it doesn't sound good. Yeah, I mean, what are they thinking, seeing families in with this group of people? Just didn't make sense. Anyway, I feel like California is trying to perpetuate homelessness, putting those kids in there. It's going to fracture their little psyches. Anyway, I, yeah, imagine your little granddaughter, six-year-old granddaughter, growing up in that atmosphere, please. And I would love to see two separate types of housing, that for the low-income families and that for the seriously mentally ill. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Chris Stalker, resident and business owner in Maricón. I've been up here a few times, and I've listened a lot, and I wish I had the answer to all the problems that we're talking about, but I don't. None of us do. I don't mean any disrespect for anybody that has important conservative things to say about what's going on. However, I'm not a police officer, so I can't do much about the crime. I can do a little bit, and I can have an eye out, but I can't go out there and arrest people. Not on the city council, so I can't make decisions that you folks are going to be able and need to make about what's going on with the homeless situation, the mental illness situation, et cetera. I feel a little bit frustrated when folks get up here and tell you guys that you need to be ashamed of yourselves. That's not fair. Okay? You should be proud of yourselves, because you're putting yourselves in a position in front of the entire city that nobody else wants to be in. Thank you for that. I've mentioned a schizophrenic gentleman that comes around my store a couple times. Couple days ago, he came by with the unicorn hat on his head. And I just want this guy, when he comes by my store, to look normal. But you know what? He's not normal. He comes by, he wants to help, he wants to work, but he's got some issues upstairs. Another day ago or so, he came by with some Bigfoot slippers on, and we're talking nine, ten o'clock in the morning, with the blanket dropped over his shoulders and Bigfoot slippers on. I want him to be able to help, but not in front of my store when he's wearing Bigfoot slippers and a blanket in the morning. This morning, he actually came by, and he was in shorts, socks, and a thin blanket with a hole cut in it. And I went home and got him some shoes. I really don't have the answer to what's going on around here, but there's a hundred verses in the Bible that have to do with helping homeless people. So I think we all just need to take a step back, let the professionals that I heard tonight give a speech in what they have and what they've studied. If we don't like it, maybe we need to do a little bit more homework ourselves, figure out some facts. I just want to be able to help. I don't know what the answers are, but usually when I have a problem and I don't know what to do about it, I go to the professionals that do.
Thank you. Thank you for that input. And just to let people know that individual that he's talking to, talking about, that's in front of the store, is a local resident that has a local family that lived here their whole life. And he cannot, this, this individual cannot live at their home. Too. And, and, and it's, we, we need to look at that, too, and, and do you kick out, let me ask the members of the public. Would you kick out a family member, kick them out on the streets and let them die on the streets? Just think about that part of it. If your family, or you're talking about kids, well, those same kids could possibly have no place to go. They, in fact, there's a number of kids right now around town. They're living in trailers or living in tents. So we need to think about that part, too, that these kids are, we can, we can come up in front there. I'm making a statement, because that's what I can do. But we need to, we need to think about those kids that are living in tents and figure out how to fix that problem, too. And it's, it's a big problem. It's one that I can't solve. I'm not going to solve it. Just like you said, there's, there's more, so many elements to this thing that none of us can solve this problem, but we can try. That's what we can do. So yes, please bring up some more public comments. I'm sorry for interrupting you, so please, please come up and, and speak your mind. I really want to hear it.
Hello, my name is Rico Gutierrez, and I do work for Behavioral Health as a case manager. And I have been working at the county for seven and a half years. Prior to that, I was working in the Resource Center doing community work with the Mental Health Services Act. So I've been working with the community. So I think important things for people to recognize when they talk about children that might be exposed to the mentally ill. I question where these kids are going to live in an apartment building where there aren't mentally ill people there, because guess what? I'm here standing next to you as someone who has struggled with depression most of my life, as someone who has been through a lot of trauma, as somebody who has worked hard to be where I am. And one, I had options. I had opportunities. Michelle Gorman helped me. I have been served by these type of things, services, housing stuff. I, I never had housing. I have been homeless before. But the other important thing that's important to recognize is mentally ill people are at much higher rate of being harmed by us than they are that to harm you. That's just not how it works. It's more likely that, that they are going to be hurt, harmed, and they're more afraid of us than we are of them, and they should be. And recognizing that, you know, if you believe in doing, you know, taking care of our brothers and sisters, helping our brothers and sisters, lifting their hands up, supporting our community, this is a way to do it. And, and I am really excited by the opportunity to have a group of people living together, and no matter where you have housing, you're going to have a mixture of mentally ill and people that have kids. I have kids, too. So I, I mean, I think we really have to recognize the fact that we are one community here, and they're part of us. We are part of them. So I do really, I am excited about this. And the idea that we're going to be able to provide services in a building where a lot of people are together, so a case manager could be like onsite and help individuals that need it when they need it. And of those other apartments, there might be people that step out and say, you know what, I'm ready to. I haven't addressed what I need, and this is an opportunity. I see that this can work. And it also helps the community recognize that there are options to step forward and get help, because they see other people getting help. So one other thing, it's not likely that we're going to put how people in housing that haven't already started addressing their issues. And it's not like we're going to run up, run down the street and scoop up mentally ill people at the highest acuity and put them in apartments without any preparation for that. That's going to be the first step, is pre- preparing people to get services and to be people that are already getting services and, and people that are already taking medications. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a point well made, too, that a lot of these individuals are going to be here, are seeking help, too. That's the first step to recovery of any sort is seeking help.
Forgot something.
Okay, we got to make it short, because I'm not letting everybody do this.
We're, we're actually dealing with this right now, ineffectively. The transportation issue that you talked about, the folks that are on the county system that I've seen that have a counselor that comes to them and talks to them, takes them to the grocery store if they need to go grocery shopping. I don't know about taking them to the movie or go hang out on the corner, but I do know that there are resources for just about everything. It's just a matter of putting it all together and making something work. When you talk about the cost of these housing and, and the fact that we're already doing something, I know for a fact that in my neighborhood on where my store is, there's motels that are nothing more than the bottom of the line of the hotel system. These homeless people are getting housed there. And I believe the county or the city is paying up to a thousand dollars a month for these people to have temporary housing in a motel room. That is not the answer to the solution.
Yep, thank you.
Ben Woodruff, I live on Nap Street. And, uh, sorry, I get nervous sometimes. Our church is partnered with Beacon of Pope. We hand out food on Tuesday nights, and we go all over the city. Tonight, we fed fifty-one people. And I can tell you, tonight, the, the wind tonight was just cold. I mean, I think it was bad enough walking your car into here. Imagine spending the night out in the cold. I think having housing like this is a part of the equation, but having community involvement, you know, whether it's donating food to the food bank or helping someone out that you see needs help, give them a pair of gloves. You know, this isn't the only solution to solve our problem. We're a community. Let's work together to, to lift them up.
Thank you, Ben. Oh, we got one on Zoom there. Go ahead, Samantha.
There we go. Hi. My name is Samantha Schleter. I used to be Claire, though. I've lived in this town my whole life. Um, I'm really excited about this project. Actually, I, I've heard all the concerns everyone has and I understand where they're coming from. I have to say, I'm especially entertained or excited about the idea of putting all these different types of people together in one space. I know that there was a suggestion earlier of, you know, maybe we should separate them out and have two different types of housing. And I mean, when has segregation ever worked well in history? That's all I'm saying. Is the idea with the mentally ill is that, you know, you do want to get them to where they're integrated back into the community and what better way to do that than having them share a residence and to have that sense of community. So I'm actually really looking forward to seeing this go somewhere and actually become something for those in the community who need it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Sarah Springfield, I'm the Executive Director of Youth Empowerment SISQ and usually I'm standing before you with a pitch for another project. But I also wanted to throw my support in behind this project. I think it's, it's really clear that homelessness and mental illness in our community to support folks in recovery from both of those things, that it's going to take a lot of projects of different scopes, of different sizes, of different shapes to achieve that. And I think that this project is a really important piece. And I want to echo what other folks have said, you know, about there being folks with mental illness in the room tonight, when folks are speaking with, you know, some level of vehemence about members of our community. And statistically, it's like 20% of US adults who have mental illness. So that means there's at least seven of us, and I'll say of us as a person with anxiety and depression also, there's seven of us in the room tonight who are being spoken about in ways that are, I hope are not reflective of the community and neighborly feeling that we have for each other. And folks with mental illness have a Supreme Court affirmed right to community integration and community inclusion. And I am very concerned with youth safety. That's why we're pushing for a variety of other projects that would bring, support youth out of homelessness. I work with children in foster care. I work with children who have experienced domestic violence. And I have no concerns about the safety of having families housed with folks with mental illness in this project. I think it's wonderful. Children thrive in diverse environments. People who are experiencing mental illness have a right to be integrated into the community with families and to be around diverse people. I, I love to the point that segregation does not work and is not legal. People with disabilities, which includes people with mental illness, have a right to be integrated into our communities. And we are all safer when everybody's basic needs are met. Nobody is safer when homeless people are sleeping in tents, are having to steal for food to meet their basic needs, to do whatever. Nobody is safer. Everybody is safer when people, when everybody in our community has their basic needs met. And the biggest one is housing. Again, echo that folks with mental illness are much more likely to be victims of crime than they are to be perpetrators of crime. This is backed up by a ton of research and I would encourage the council and concerned folks here tonight to look into that more. So, um, yeah, I just, I think this is a wonderful project. I encourage the city to continue to support it. And I commend the county for taking the lead on it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And those more public comments, so don't be shy.
Good evening, guys. My name is Toby Ruse and I'm the Alcohol and Drug Minister for Siskiyou County Behavioral Health. And I'm coming from the substance use side. And we have quite a few clients that we, that are in treatment with us and they're homeless. And they've been able to keep clean and sober, coming to treatment, but they're having a heck of a time living under the bridges or living across the street, the road from us to stay clean. I've lost family members to heroin, alcoholism. So I, this is a really, this is a really touchy subject for me. So this project that we're doing that Sarah had and that Sarah has, you know, and all the committee that's put this together. It's, it's a need that we really do need to address in Siskiyou County. It's not going to go away. And having housing for people that are trying their hardest to stay clean and sober and they come to groups and they're still clean. It's, it just, it's amazing that they're able to do this with, with no resources outside, living under the bridge and that's it. So I'm just here today to say I'm really, really supportive of this project and thank you guys for listening.
Thank you, Toby.
Good evening. Aaron Heinsley of 901 Montague Road. I'm a local business owner. I think we all can agree that, you know, we have a major problem with homelessness and something needs to be done. But some of the comments tonight that were made just don't make sense. When we say that the mentally ill, severe mentally ill are the ones that are, you know, that, that are not the problem and that they should be worried about us. No sane person goes and shoots up a school. No. You know, that's just not what it is. Okay. So if we're going to integrate, you know, severe mentally ill people into housing units with families, what, what is the criteria for these people getting into these homes? Is there, you know, things that are already put in place that they have to meet to, you know, be, be allowed to be in with these kids and in other families that, that are, you know, trying to live their lives? And then this, 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 this housing unit on Foothill, is it not right next where the proposed new pool is going to go? Go to any park in Wairika? There's needles everywhere. Are we not inviting this right to this whole new amazing pool that we're going to put in? What, what are we going to do to combat that? You know, what are we doing? I don't know what the answer is. I think we all agree that there's a problem and it needs to be, there's something needs to be done. I don't necessarily think this is it. And if it is it, I don't think it's the right spot. You know, it shouldn't be right next to the new pool that we want to put where we're going to send all of our kids to go, where we already have needle problems at every other park. Explain to me how this works. Tell me, anybody here that's supporting this housing project, tell me how this is not going to be any different than any other park that we have. Please explain that to me.
They'll give, they'll have a chance to come up and speak.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aaron. Who are you?
Sorry. Sheriff, Sheriff Byleru.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you. Won't talk forever. I know you're not thinking this, right? No, just a couple of things, just listening to everybody. I wanted to thank Sarah and the crew here only because I've had lots of discussions with her over the years about many different mental health projects. So thanks for being here and, and working on this. So there is no one solution to this, but, but I will share something about the jail, only because I know that very well now, in that it's, I mean, I'm not kidding you when I say it's kind of turned into a mental health facility and no matter where you go or what project you, I guess, focus on, just recognize that that is a huge issue that we face in the county is that most of our criminals, you're finding that are very mentally ill. I'm not suggesting that the answer would be to put them in tents in your yard or anything of, of that nature. And, and part of me, I mean, especially with this project being in the city, for example, you know, I hate to throw that on the folks that are going to be taking care of that, but like the chief back there. But just know that the sheriff's office in the county, you know, we're here to support however we can because it's a, it's a county issue. We see it a lot here and I see it quite a bit in, in the city of Wairika. So I do know that I ran the numbers one time at the jail and trying to find out how many people are mentally ill. And it was shocking to find out that it was almost half the folks that were in there at any given time were taking psych meds. It's terrible. So the system's broken. Law enforcement can only do so many things. And we, we've been, had our hands tied behind our backs quite a bit. So I just wanted to throw out a little bit of stats about the jail because it's something that I deal with every day. So however I can encourage something to be done, something has to be done. If, if this project to its, you know, specifications isn't what the city needs or looking for, I, I echo what a few people have said, just to work together to find the solution. Case management is huge. I've heard that a few times. I've heard that over the years too. The idea is that it's very specific about looking after the individual and, and sort of holding their hand. The, the day reporting center that we have where people spend a lot of their time when they're either sentenced, you know, probationary terms or whatnot. Some of the best success I've ever seen is that program because people are forced to come in, take classes, get on some kind of plan. The problem that we see people fail at is when they go back and couch surf with their friends. So I'm not, I'm not trying to say, I don't want to suggest that necessarily because I think it's the city and the people that live here that needs to voice their concerns about what the project looks like. I'm just coming at it at a different level, suggesting to you that the system is broken. Any help would be great. And these people need not be in jail. Not saying that criminals don't belong in jail. Don't get me wrong on that. I'm all for that. But I'm finding more and more, I'm sheriff, that there are people that, that we failed long ago. So I have a, I have two sides of me that are very, I'm, I'm very empathetic for people, but also rule of law, you know, and I have to balance it. I'm a Libra too. I was set up long ago. So, but anyways, thank you, the team. They spent a lot of time on this. So however I can help as sheriff, I'm here for you. I know it's frustrating, but hang in there and we'll find a good solution.
Thank, thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it. And I just want to reiterate what he said on one part, one level of that. And that is people that are incarcerated in the jail. A lot of these, it's, it's a proven fact and whether people want to believe it or not, that when they have a place to stay, a place to go to, that they're not out on the streets, that they're not going to be causing problems. It's a plain and simple fact. When they've done tons of surveys up there at the rogue retreat up in Medford with their homeless, their, their urban campsite, the homeless shelter and stuff like that. And the, the numbers that they've come up with saves the community hundreds of thousands of dollars by having these individuals in a controlled environment because they're in a safe environment. They're not out causing crimes and whatnot and what, what maybe caused them to be homeless. So if they're in a structured environment, it helps them being a productive person in the society. It's, it's amazing the difference. It saves us as a, as a city, as a county, as a state, it saves thousands up to millions of dollars when you have a place for these individuals to go. That's a safe, structured environment. And like what they're going to talk about here too, is with these individuals being in this apartment complex, then they'll be able to have the opportunity to reach out and give services to these individuals for mental health, for, for men, drug and alcohol rehab programs. And these individuals that go to this apartment complex, we're going to want to be there. And they're going to try to go to the next level and be productive citizens. That's the thing when we went up to, when Mr. McCoy and I went up to the rogue retreat and visited the urban campsite and the shelter up there, these individuals were trying to take, get themselves to a better level. In fact, we've seen the end result that these few individuals that were there that we interviewed and spoke with went from one level of homelessness, causing, doing drugs, causing crimes, and went through their program, through that rogue retreat and went through that whole program. And now are going out and having their, have a job and we're actually having their own apartment and stuff. So, and they're cleaned up. Exactly. Exactly. We have to come up. Yes.
I'm Maria Tri. Being authors, writing down questions. I do have another question. The, the 25 units that are going to be, well, actually all 50 units, no matter who is in. And they're not just picked from Wairika. It's a county thing. So I'm, I'm wanting to know, are we picking five from Wairika and weed and five and Mount Chester five and, you know, the whole county, the whole county. It's a county thing. And then also, you know, I support this completely. I really do. I'm the one who is, was begging Nancy to do something for, and, and save these people, not let them freeze it up. But I don't like that it was started in 2016 and we're just hearing about it. That really upsets me. And I also don't like there's only 50 units. There's more than 50 people who need help. Thank you.
Thank you, Don Marie. Okay, so I guess we're, there's no other public comments and we'll start addressing some of these questions. Mr. Jason?
So the first question I have here for the council and or Dr. Sarah Kellard is, if you knew about this in 2016, why am I hearing about this now?
I guess if you want to start off.
So sure.
I mean, it's, it's definitely something we had addressed as a city too, because it was brought in front of the planning commission. And we'll re, we'll talk about that. And that's anything that's brought in front of the planning commission is, is public knowledge and is stated public knowledge. It's put in the newspaper. It's put out in every resource we can. So, yes, go ahead, Dr. Sir.
So as part of our housing plan, we did, we started community outreach and I can't remember if that was in 2018 or 2019 as part of writing our plan. And so we did community outreach and community forums around this project. And I think, as I recall, PLHA was coming around, out around the same time. I know that's been a conversation here. And so as part of that as well, we talked about this plan because we went out to the various cities and, and needed to get input in order to, to put the county's PLHA funding towards the project. We also, the housing advisory committee, which has met monthly for years now, that was, this project has been a discussion at that forum and the previous city manager and other, you know, other members from this body were present at those meetings. Those are public meetings. And, you know, it's, I've talked about it in many, many different places over the years. And so I, you know, I'm sorry that it didn't come to your attention. If you have ideas about where, like I said, we, we provide many, many housing resources and projects. And if there are places that, you know, we could better reach the community, I'm happy to do that type of outreach. So, and I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, like I said, it did come in front of the.
I'm sorry to cut you guys off, but we're just going to answer these questions. The public comment period is, is closed on this item. So now is the time, the questions that I've written down, we will address those ones. And we're not going to have a back and forth at this moment unless the mayor sees, sees fit to reverse that.
Thank you, Jason.
So question number two, what happens after year 20?
So our commitment to the project is 20 years. That's what's written into the project. However, these are services that we, we provided to the community for, you know, my entire career and will continue to provide to the community ongoing. These are mandated services. I'm assuming that the end of the 20 year commitment, we will, you know, as I think Rico said, it's wonderful for us to have an opportunity where we can provide services to people who are all living at the same site. And we can, we can bring all of the service providers together, you know, medication services, case management, therapists and other kinds of services, job, you know, search services and benefits. So we, we have no intention of stopping services after 20 years. That's just the commitment that's written into the plan.
Question number three, and forgive me. Question number three, and forgive me for the verbiage on these, but this is how I wrote this question. Are these people child molesters?
No.
May I make a statement that child molesters are available for anybody seeking. On the. The Megan's Law website. In addition to that, each of your property schools is. Each property public school is, has to keep a website and or a list for parents to look at. In the school office, I have this principal and vice principal objects and I update you that monthly. And parents that didn't have a computer in them to see. And if we're going to talk about child molesters, we also have to look at, we have quite a number in this community. So. You'd be surprised if you go to Megan's Law website, how close three or four child molesters are.
And and thanks to our great state that after five years, their record is clean, which is lovely. That's my own personal opinion, sorry.
So I will just say in, in response to this issue in general. You know, I'm a parent. I'm the Director of Health and Human Services. I have siblings. I have family members. That live in communities similar to this. I, I, my responsibility to the community weighs heavy on me. Right? We work with a lot of people who have a lot of challenges. I never wanted on my conscience that I ever did anything. I've been, I've been working at Behavioral Health since two thousand as a psychologist. And as the Behavioral Health Director and now the Health and Human Services Director and. You know, throughout my time in service, my goal has been to serve people and I never want anyone. To experience any harm from any of their programs I administer. And so I work really hard every day and have in this community for twenty years to ensure that doesn't happen.
Question number four is in reference to your slideshow. You referenced Arcata, I believe, or Humboldt County. Can you give us a synopsis on how that has worked out?
So I don't, I see Jessica's on the phone. I know she's new. Oh. Ryan, I, I will defer to Ryan on that question.
Great. Good, good evening. My name is Ryan LaBrew. I'm with RCHDC. Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, Ryan, this is Jason Ledbetter. So in reference to the slideshow, there was a slide referencing a very similar. Project in Humboldt County. I believe possibly Arcata, or the question is. How has that project in Arcata and or Humboldt County worked out since its inception?
Yes, I think it's worked out great, actually. Again, you know, a lot of great apologies for my. My children here. Contradicting statements with respect to the proposed housing project here. But the reality is just what Sarah's mentioning is that the supportive services provided by her department are, are. Completely integral or critical to to making this project to success. And in these properties that we do develop and manage and own. The supportive services are, are help them move seamlessly. There, there's always issues and low income housing in general and and just standard housing in general. But you see it less in supportive housing because of those wraparound services.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also say that all of the individuals who are accessing this type of housing, no one is mandated to this type of housing, right? People can choose to live in these apartments and all of them have a lease and are required. To abide by the terms of that lease, whether it's the no place like home units or it is the low income housing unit. So you can't just live in one of these units and, you know, not abide by the rules of that community. So RCHDC manages that closely in collaboration with, you know, our case managers and our staff. And people who aren't able to follow the rules of that community, you know, aren't able to continue to live there.
Question number five, the question around transportation.
So we've been working with the city to develop the stage, you know, expand the stage, stop out further. On foothill as well as to develop with them a schedule that would, you know, help facilitate. People getting into town. In addition, Behavioral Health, as you've probably seen behind our twenty sixty building, has a fleet of vehicles. And we have transportation staff that provide a lot of transportation. We also work with Partnership Health Plan. Who provides transportation for, for everyone, actually, who is a member of partnership. To medical appointments. So we use a variety of transportation services.
Which will actually make it easier for you guys to be able to transport some of these individuals because it will be in a more central location, correct?
It will make it, that will make it easier, but what really will be easier is that case managers, Rico can drive out there and see. You know, twenty people as opposed to driving out to Montague and then driving down to Happy Camp and driving, you know.
Thank you. So as part of the site plan review, we do actually tackle transportation in that review for the city. And look at our off-street parking requirements. So we do have spaces available for individuals who do have car ownership. In addition to that, talking to the program, they do also have vehicles that staff can use as well for transportation. And then Stage also has hired a consultant to look at the routes to evaluate the effectiveness of those routes. There is a stop at the YMCA, which is nearby, which is near enough to meet government code section requirements for transportation location. And then we are also working with Stage to place a new stage stop under the new routes for efficiency. And then we are also looking at other transportation options for rental cars. Enterprise does have a nonprofit sector. That does allow for cars to be available to residents for these types of units.
Thank you.
Question number six is around the definition of the terminology seriously mentally ill. Can you cover that, what that means from, I guess, the standpoint of of your job?
Sure. So serious. Seriously and persistently mentally ill, which is probably the phrase that you have heard, are individuals who have a mental health diagnosis. And a significant impairment in some area of functioning, right? So they're not able to sustain a relationship. Or to hold a job. And they have a mental health diagnosis. And so that, you know, there's a range, right? We see people who are really struggling. We see people that and struggle and and probably will struggle for their entire lives. Without some sort of support from us or someone else. And then we have people that come into services who have experienced. A trauma, right? The death of a child or something else and are really struggling with that trauma, fire victims, right? And, you know, we're able to work with them and and help them work through that experience and move on in their lives. It's very broad. It's a continuum, right? So there's, you know, people who have significant impairments are, are our target population. And then the Managed Care Plan Partnership is responsible for providing services to people who, you know, don't, aren't experiencing such. Such significant impairments. So, I mean, there are people with schizophrenia who don't need our services, right? They're stable in the community. They don't need our services. Or people who are bipolar, who are, you know, successful in their, in their lives and employed and all those things. So it's not, it's not enough just to say, okay, here's, it's these diagnoses, right? It's if you're schizophrenic, if you're schizophrenic or you're bipolar, or you have PTSD, it doesn't, it doesn't really work that way. There is this other component that has to do with, you know, how, how much are you struggling in your life? And, you know, it can go both ways, right? There could be somebody that is, has what are considered fairly mild. And that's not really, that's really not a great term, but, you know, who have anxiety, for instance, that's completely debilitating. And they never leave their house, right? But most people consider anxiety as not a really significant mental health issue. So it runs the gamut and you're right. It's, it's, you know, there's a real art to. Sort of. An art to providing the service, I would say.
If you're talking about on a continuum, when you compare it to something like the continuum for depending on what you believe. Either for Asperger's or for autism. I know that there are two camps now. Some people say Asperger's is not autism, but there's a spectrum. Same thing with mountain. There's a spectrum. You have mountain children who want to cower. If you have some that are actors, you have some that are very, you have some that, that can't.
Yes.
A certain amount, you know, though some are more successful enough and with mental health, with some they're more successful.
Yes, there is a continuum, I would say, for, for pretty much every mental health diagnosis. I would say that's a fair statement, yes.
So question number seven here is in regards to families, I believe, that would be at this site, specifically children. It's very vague, but just in general, what about the kids and how do they play outside?
I'm not sure that I really have a good answer for that. I, I completely agree with Rico's statement. I don't believe probably anybody. Is living in this town or any other town that far from somebody who's struggling with a mental illness. And, you know, the research is clear that people with mental illness are much more likely to be victims of crime than perpetrators of crime. And, and people who are not abiding by the rules of the complex, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't be able to maintain their tendency. That's exactly right.
So I, I think that we're getting off topic right now and that this is, I guess, at this point. The public comment period and it's really at the discretion of the mayor here. But I would suggest to the mayor that if you do want to allow people to speak after this is that they come to the podium. But moving on to number eight, what is the criteria for someone to get into one of these homes? Or apartments?
So I will speak a little bit from the no place like home side and hopefully Beth or Ryan can speak to the low income housing. So in Siskiyou County, and this, I think, addresses another question as well that someone asked later on. Housing, and we're just getting this system up and running and Madeline is an expert, so I might need a little bit of help. Coordinated entry. So people who, who are experiencing homelessness. Are. Essentially come into the coordinated entry system and are rated in terms of a whole bunch of different. On a whole bunch of different scales. And, and then a list is created from the court, in the coordinated entry system. And our, our staff have been put into that as well. So it's not just that someone fills out the question, the form. And then, you know, the list is created without any other additional input. And so our staff meet weekly or monthly? Weekly, review that list and determine who is the best fit for the housing, for the no place like home. Units or any other type of housing that we have available. So as I said, we have many housing projects going. So I don't know if Beth or Ryan, you can speak to the criteria for low income housing. If you're still there. I see Beth is still there. Put her on the spot.
Oh, there it is. Hi. Yeah, so we will be working in coordination to accept the referrals from the county. But we'll also open up an application process and we are required to follow their housing rules, which means that we generally. Open up our, we do our marketing, our affirmative fair marketing and open up our application process. So that everyone who. Who may not otherwise know about these opportunities will be notified about our waiting list or our application process that we will open. And so, you know, we're still far away from that, that point. We still have, we hope to break ground in mid-March. And we'll have about, you know, more than a year of construction. And so as soon as, you know, we're going to open up our marketing. Program will ensure that, you know, Sarah has, and the city and the county has our application process. Does that, does that answer the question? Thank you.
Yeah, I guess i- is there any specific criteria you can share with us? It sounds like there will be a referral and there'll, there'll be case management. And but if there, if there's any information anyone can provide as far as criteria.
So for no place like home, right? You need to have a mental illness. And there are other criteria that, that rank you in terms of chronically homeless. Right. So there are, there are, I believe, you, you, we're not going to put somebody in this complex. That is a, you know, has a history of molestation, for instance, right? There aren't other, but there are, there are criteria, you know, we will, I'm sure, be housing people who have experienced in the criminal justice system. Because the population that we work with has that history. As Sheriff Larue said, you know, there are many people that are cycling. In and out of jail because they're committing.
Is it, you can do this much violence, not this much violence and we'll let you in? Like, what is, you have that?
There's no clear line like that. Yeah, there's no clear line. Oh, go ahead, Beth.
Oh, there is an income eligibility criteria. I mean, it's hard for us to hear what folks are saying in, you know, that don't have a mic. So I'm not quite sure if we need to respond to any of that.
Address these questions up to a mic of some sort, so then people, other people can hear these, so.
So I think, Beth, the question is, on the low income housing side, really, what is the eligibility criteria? Is it just strictly income?
Yeah, and actually, I'm sorry, Dr. Kellard, I think in order to get at the root of this gentleman's inquiry is. Really, where is the threshold at which point you would not allow someone to live in this?
That's a good way to put it.
Yeah.
On the negative side.
So is that for us, Sarah?
Sure. Why don't you start?
Yeah, so we screen applicants and our, again, main goal is to ensure that, you know, households are going to abide, abide by the tenant, the terms of the lease. And pay rent and take care of the property and the unit, all the things that Sarah has said. We, we really, you know, screen folks, ensure that. You know, the residents are really going to, you know, allow folks to peacefully enjoy their homes. But, you know, we are required to follow housing first principles. And so, you know, the law requires us to. Follow selection practices that promote accepting applicants. But again, we do screen folks and show that they're going to abide by the terms and pay rent. And, and allow folks to peacefully enjoy their homes.
So question wise, we're going to, from here on out, the audience will have somebody come up to the mic. Because we're gonna, this will, this can be a debate back and forth all night long if we keep doing this. Yes, that's why I said we need to come up to the mics. Yes, let me, okay, stop right now. If you're gonna ask a question, I want people to come up to the mic right now or else I'm calling the meeting, plain and simple.
Well, and, and this is just to get, just to engage you, Mr. Mayor, is that. It, it is really your call, but at this moment, the, the time for questions have been documented and now I am asking them to. Dr. Sarah Kallard, who is here as kind of a favor to the council because.
The doctor was given an opportunity and I think it's very important. This has to be a statutory contractual agreement. You have qualifications written down that has to be, so it's clear cut. If they don't meet these qualifications, they don't qualify to get in there. Number two, you have to have a qualification. How do you evict them when they don't obey? The rules of the contract? You can't just evict them. Try that in the private sector. That's all I'm saying. You gotta have documentation. Because any good lawyer will tell you it's the contract of the language, the language of the contract is what decides the case. If you don't have it written down, they have free rein. Thank you very much.
You're absolutely right.
I did not get a question on that, so I'm gonna jump to the questions here back again, Dr. Kallard. And this question is actually, I think, more directed at the city council members and it has to do with the hypothetical development of a new park and a pool. But, and I think the essence was, is that currently the viewpoint of this member of the public was, is that there is a needle problem. There is a unhoused problem. At our current parks. How is that not going to spill over into the new development of the, of the pool location? I guess based off of Crossroads Housing Project being located near this proposed new pool?
Thank you. I'm Corey Middleton, City Council Member. I'm hoping by 2020, I mean, we're talking 2025 with the pool and the park. Now, if we don't discuss his issues or even address them to solve the problem, yes, they'll continue. But if we keep having the negative. No, we don't want this. No, we don't want this. No, it's not going to get better. This is what's going on. We, as a council and as a city, have been working very hard. Maybe it may not look like it and some of you may take shots at us that we should be ashamed of ourselves. I am not. And I take offense to that, but that's okay. I took, I took this as a thick-skinned position. And. You know, it's not easy to sit here. We have seats coming available. Mine's in three years. You can do better. Put your name in. It's not an easy job to run a city. And make everybody happy. I moved back five years ago. I'll keep it short. And I saw it wasn't the town that I grew up in. Wasn't, there wasn't homeless by left for Sacramento 14 years ago. I started coming back to see my parents on a regular basis, saw homeless. Saw needles in the park. Drug dealers. And I ran to hopefully be a voice for our citizens. To make it better and I think we are, we're trying. But if we don't continue on projects, be the pool. This housing project, we are not going to solve the problem. So we have to, I know we're not gonna make everybody happy. That's our job of sitting down here. And, you know, the city manager, our staff. They hear it, they get the brunt of it. So I'm hoping we're making a difference, you know? Yeah, is it? I live across from one of the. You know, lower income apartments in the city of Wairika. I live up on Bus Minor Street. You can look my address up. It's public information where I live. I see the cops there at one apartment. Forty-seven times since April. Forty-seven times. I asked the chief, they didn't get into what they're there for. That's just one apartment. There's mental ill people that live across the street from me. My safety is never in question. I walk my dogs, I go out to my car. My house has never been broken into. No one's entered my property. And there's drug, there's drug dealers across the street. There's mental ill people that live there. So what's the difference? I'll ask you this. What's the difference from where I live? To this project that are put on? There's no difference. I see the county vehicles there. So. I guess that's my statement. It's not gonna make everybody happy, but I knew this was gonna stick into the community's mind when this, this term came out. And you've been focusing on it for forty-five, no, two hours, first, whenever she took the stand. Is, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry. Let me, it's his moment. I'm sorry.
But what has stuck in your mind, and maybe it's not being answered correctly. Is you've only, you haven't mentioned, you know, the, any other residents that are to be there. What you have focused on. Is what the target word is into that project is the serious mental ill. I haven't heard anybody else talk about any of the other. Residents that are gonna be up there. I hate calling them people. They're human beings. The human beings are gonna reside there. I just hear the serious mentally ill and I sat here, what was it, two weeks ago? And said, we need to have the county come because this is what has uprooted the community. Is that word, serious mentally ill. Nothing else. It's that stigma of that. So hopefully, you know, she doesn't answer your question tonight. It's getting late and we do have other business to take care of. I know it's a big, you know, Americans speak to it. It's a big hot topic. You know, project that's gonna go there for our community. But maybe if your question isn't answered. Maybe reach out to the doctor or one of our staff members. Maybe they can, or go down and see them. Maybe they can, you know, explain what they go through every day. And help you with that. We can't, because I don't have her degree.
Hang on a second.
I didn't say it was the question that was asked. I said, that's what you keep focusing on is the mentally, yeah.
Meeting again. I think Jason had one more questions and then I'm gonna give us a chance for some of the more in public. So go ahead, Jason.
Yeah, and I have actually two more questions now. One more was just posed to me, so. So question number 10 is based off of kind of the percentage, I guess, of how you determine who. Is housed in this location. Is there some percentage breakdown that would say? This percentage of current residents in Wairika have the ability to live in this location versus. Folks in Doris or folks in Mount Shasta? Does that make sense at all, that question?
It does make sense. And so, you know, people anywhere in Siskiyou County can enter the coordinated, coordinated entry system. And so again, that, you know, that creates. Not a list, but a priority, you know, priority list essentially. And so that we would, you know, go down that list. So it could be. From other communities.
And then the final question. And thank you for participating in this on such short notice. It's very, very much appreciated. And I know that we're not gonna have all the answers or the answers aren't gonna be satisfactory for some people, but that's not what we're asking you to do is we're just asking for you to answer the questions. If you were to sign a lease, are you required to participate in the countywide programs? Is a question that just came to me. And so I think. It sounds like that the housing structure is a countywide program by signing the lease, but maybe there's other programs. Are you, can you opt out of programs or are you required to get treatment, I guess, would be the question?
So housing first principles are that, that housing. Is. That you're not required to participate in services to remain in housing. The research, however, shows that the vast majority of people who are in housing first. Situations do choose to access those services. So we have amazing case managers like Rico and Toby and. Other people that you've met here tonight who go out and, you know, do outreach to people in those settings. And like I said, the research, there's a ton of research out there on housing first. Anyone can Google it and there's information on. Programs in California, but in other states as well. And, you know. It's, it's really clear from the research that people choose to participate in that situation.
That concludes the questions on this, Mayor. I suggest that we possibly move on to the next topics, but.
I, I promised him to, that he could speak one more time. So, come on, I do have to come up to the mic. I'm sorry, because we do need to keep it structured.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Two things. One, I don't think you ever really addressed what the criteria was as far as. Folks coming in if they, you know, as far as. Child predators or anything like that, if that's gonna be a criteria to not let these people into these. Family units. And then also, Mr. Milton, you kind of dodged my question on the needles. I, my question was. What is gonna make the new park up on Foothill? Different than any other park that we're already not. You know, that we're fighting needles and take a kid to any park in Wairika and we have needles, especially Greenhorn. So what's the difference? What, what are we gonna do to combat that?
I don't know if there's gonna be a difference. Like, we can't, well. You know, I'm like a third of the county or the best that the county does a free needle program.
So is that an exchange program?
I don't know. It's, it's an exchange anymore. I think it is exchanged. It's a county program.
But it's not an exchange program, is it? It's a, anybody can just. So is that. On an honor system? Do, do you require an exchange? Because I, I do fuel breaks. I do stuff all over this county, put big fuel breaks in all over. We run into needles and stuff everywhere. So. These needles are coming from somewhere. They're obviously not being exchanged for new needles. And if they are. Is it one per 100 or what is it? Because they're everywhere.
Are you, do you want me to continue the question? Do you want her to continue with the answer to the question? Like I said, that's. You know. They state that the needle program is for. You know, not transmitting other diseases by sharing a needle for HIV, hepatitis. What have you? So that's why they do that program. I don't, you know, I don't want to share my personal, well, I'll share my personal opinion. I don't think the program is doing our city any good. With handing it out at our city property. That's just my opinion. But the county does do it. To help with disease or infectious illness. But it is a big problem. How we tackle it, I, sitting up here as a city council member, I don't have the answers. I don't even know if our sheriff or chief of police. Or the county health have the. Problem. It's, it's a huge addiction problem here. It's a huge addiction problem. And so I don't, I'm gonna sit here personally say, I don't have the answer. You know, hopefully it gets better. Like I said, I keep focusing on, I don't know if you're saying the park in 2025. I'm hoping in three years, four years now, when that pool is completed. If it gets completed. Hopefully it does. I think it's gonna be, I'm a supporter of that pool. You know, it's gonna be above the, you know, it's gonna be for the voters if we, is a tax.
Better place in 2025 than we.
I, I believe so. I hope so. I believe so. I hope so. I think there's a lot of programs and hard workers.
Been in the last five years. Well, have we gone down or have we gone up?
I, I think we have got, I think we've gotten, I, I believe, maybe you can, you call me a fool or naive, but I think, you know, crime has got up, but I think our programs and services. I think, I don't know if it's gotten better in the past, but I think we're turning a page. I really do. I believe that. You might call me naive, but I think we have hard workers that are at the county, sitting in our audience. Hard workers that are sitting in here, hard workers that sit across the hall from me, hard workers that sit up here at the police department. I think we're tackling it. We've had our struggles. Our police chief is doing an amazing job. And we're not shorthanded anymore at the police. That's, I don't want that getting out there. Neither does he. He has built that department up. So we are working hard to tackle and so is he to tackle these problems. And so I'm hoping. Call me naive or whatever you want. I'm hoping in 2025, this city is gonna be the town I was born and raised in. It's always gonna be there. It's not gonna go away.
I'm not gonna argue with you to say that everyone here is trying to make it a better community and a better place. And so were the people before, all of you and you, but look where it's going. It's not gonna be better in five years, especially in California.
I hope it will.
Well, that's, that's a good point because a lot of this comes down to, comes down on us because we are part of the state of California.
I get that and, and that's something else that maybe I'm just a little naive on myself as well. But I under, I know that California has certain laws. And then I know that our county and our city also has their own mandates or. Whatever you call those two, those laws.
And most, most of them we have to follow California's, pretty much all of them, we have to follow California's rules and regulations and all that. And that's, this is gonna be a whole nother debate. So I mean, we can, we can go on about that.
I, I, I understand. I, I get back to the core question. The, the core question was, what is gonna make this park any different than any of our other parks as far as?
I'm sorry, that is not the Crossroads presentation public comment. And so. I respect your question and I think it's a valid question, but I would suggest at this point that we are on the Crossroads topic and I'm also suggesting. That we have completed the public comment section of that. So my suggestion would be, I'll give you my card and we can talk about those issues because they're long-term issues in that. I would then have you come back to the next meeting in two weeks and then we would address basically what you're stating, because we do have a guest here. Specific to the Crossroads project and not the park.
I, I think he was stating that he's afraid that with the residents that are going to be living at the crossroads, that they're gonna throw needles. And it's not right. I mean, it's not right, like store. And like I say, they're gonna walk up the street and not use needles in the park. They might will. They, they probably will.
Well, when we don't know what the criteria is, then.
Right. So, but Jason's gonna offer you his card. I'm, my number's on the website and my email as well. Feel free to reach me. Our, our numbers are listed. Feel free to call me. I read out the Jason as well.
And like, and, and, and thank you for, you know, standing up. And I wish, like I said, I wish more.
And I share your concerns.
Come forward on every night that we have a city council meeting and not just for one hot topic or one thing. I wish more people would come forward and talk and speak their mind and let us know how you feel because. It's all different avenues, you know, what you're talking about. There's so many different levels. Of things, you know, you're talking about the, the needle, just to, and we're gonna end it here, but you're talking about the needles. There's so many different levels to that and it's not just, it's not just what we see here. It's the state of California. It's federally. It's all these other issues that are compounded. That we need to address, not just one little, just one little thing. It's a whole bunch of issues that's gotten way out of control.
But as, a- as California has their laws, don't we have our own ordinance?
We have ordinances, but they still have to follow California's rules and regulations. Yes. There's still, there's still guide, there's guidelines of that. And that's like.
Well, we can have an ordinance on, off of that, can't we? Because we do on certain things as far as marijuana cultivation, right?
Absolutely.
We have our own ordinance that goes against the state's ordinance on that. So what is the difference between? That and, thank you, that and. Our, our, our other problems.
And you're, you're absolutely right. There's.
So why do we, why can we have an ordinance here but not here?
Yep, no, and you make a very good point. And those are things that we need to, we need to address individually. So. So are you asking an ordinance on the needles? Is that what you're asking an ordinance on then?
I'd say an, an ordinance on the needles, the homelessness, the everything. There, there's so many things.
That's a good point.
So many things that we just fall under this, oh, well, California says we have to do this. But then we decide, hey, well, California said this, but we're also gonna change it over here because we're gonna have our own ordinance on this, such as marijuana cultivation.
And that's, that's a good point. And. Really, I, we.
Not that I'm for it. I'm just saying.
We do need to hear more on stuff like that. So if you have any ideas on any of these. Any of these ordinances, please, I mean, honestly, get a hold of us, seriously, because these are individual ordinances that we need to work on. A lot of ordinances in the city are outdated. I'll be the first one to admit that, because they are, they are outdated. And there's a lot of them that need to be new ordinances that need to be brought up. And I just like recently, we just brought up the shopping cart ordinance. The people, you know, some people are against and some people are for. Comes down to the shopping cart ordinance, makes it to where we get the shopping carts off the streets. They don't become trash carts. Okay? That's an ordinance that we developed as a city. So yes, we can develop things that follows the guidelines. Cause that follows the guidelines of this, of the state, but it still falls into something that we can do. But yes, you are so right. We can do ordinances that go on certain specific things like that. So if you have any ideas on ordinances, absolutely tell us about them, you know. Tonight's not the time, but yes, you, you are definitely on the right track on that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Oh yeah. There's, there's a number of different ordinances that we're working on. Yeah, there's a lot of outdated ordinances or. But getting back to it, um, thank you guys for presentation. Uh, thank you for all the public input. And it's, it's something that we want to hear more of. So don't stop. Come back to the city, next city council meeting. Um, ask questions, ask if there's an ordinance, specific ordinance that could be brought up. Real for, all for that. I mean, I am all for pushing forward on things. It's going to obviously help our community by first and foremost. Yes, Sarah.
So I just wanted to thank you for the invitation to come and talk about the project. We're super excited about it. It's been a long time in the planning and to thank the public for your comments and your input. My contact information is on the county website on the HHSA page, and I'm always happy to talk to anyone. So please feel free to call me with any questions or concerns or whatever. So thank you again.
Well, thank you.
Have a good evening.
I just want to, I just want to thank all you guys for showing up and everybody showing up. Whether you believe in the programs or not, these, these individuals are working a lot of hours, helping out, trying to make this community a better place. They really are, just like all of us are. It's just how you look at it. Thank you. Yeah. Zach, all right, we are off to, what are we off to? Someplace. Oh, here we go. Consent calendar. Good golly, that's usually six thirty. No, no, unfortunately you can't, unfortunately you can't make it that quick either. Um, consent calendar, all matters of the consent calendar agenda, agenda are considered routine and non-controversial will be enacted under one motion unless a member of the council wishes to remove. An item for discussion. A approval ratification payments issued from January twenty fourth, twenty twenty two through Jan, excuse me, through February sixth, twenty twenty two. The approval of minutes of regular meeting held on February's first, twenty twenty two. See continuation of urgency number eight sixty four fireworks. The continuation urgency resolution number twenty twenty one dash fifty one remote public meetings. Uh, E approval of appointment of Karen Williams Stan Shaw, the Wairega Fire Department. Uh, F, adopt a resolution approving vendors and other requests associated with a special event being held with the Quanis Club. To be known as a Quanis Club Easter egg hunt twenty twenty two. G, adopt a resolution to oppose initiative twenty one dash zero zero four two. A one and H, we, we have full text readings, all ordinances on the agendas, ordinance shall be introduced and adopted by title only. So before we get started, I don't know, we don't have anybody from the Quanis here, do we? Nope. Okay. So that was one of them I was going to ask. And one for my own personal, um, I have to, I have to recuse myself from, um, payments. A, um, because I have a conflict there actually is my cousin, I'll state it, my cousin actually repaired the fence for the gate at the police station. And he actually rents from my property. So there's financial thing. So I have to recuse myself from that situation. And that's five A. And if there's any other questions on any of the other ones, then you could go, you can do the, the five B through H, and then we'll go to five A.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda from five B through five H.
I can't hear you, Joan.
Hi, Don.
Hi.
You know, you were there.
Yeah.
Our attorney is keeping track of us. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I would like to approve, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Those five B through five H.
All righty, we have a motion now. Do we have a second? Anybody?
This is Councilman McCoy and I'll make the second.
Second, uh, we roll call, Joan Smith Freeman.
Aye.
Paul McCoy.
Aye.
Corey Middleton.
Aye.
Debbie Barrett. And I, Dwayne K. So now you can do five A with me recused from it.
I'll make a motion, this Debbie Barrett, I'll make a motion to.
Is your mic on?
No.
You're not on either. Debbie Barrett, I'll make a motion to approve five A.
Councilperson Milton, I will second the motion.
Motion in the second, I'll do roll call.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, is she going to do roll call?
I, I don't know if it's, I don't think it matters if it's a roll call, does it?
Okay.
I don't think it does as long as I'm not voting. I just can't vote. I can do, I can still run the meeting. I just can't. I just can't vote on it.
If you recuse yourself, you'd be in the gallery. I don't, I don't, I'm asking, I'm asking city manager. So, and do we have it noted in there, uh, that he recused himself?
Yeah, he's abstained.
I mean, I know he's not getting any financial gain. I understand why he's doing it.
Okay, I'll do roll call and then we don't have to worry about.
Well, I don't, not trying to be a.
Joan Smith Freeman. Aye.
Aye.
Corey Middleton.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
There we go. Now we'll move on to number six, old business discussion, possible action, city manager permanent local housing allocation PLHA program.
Arthur, if you can pull up my slideshow, please. So Jason Ledbetter, city manager. So we are here again to talk about the PLHA, or the PLHA program, also known as the, uh, permanent local housing allocation program grant. So, uh, onto the next slide there, please, Arthur. So we have, uh, three options we've been discussing here since I started about six weeks ago. And I think we're discussed, uh, before my tenure. Uh, the first one was an all age shelter. Secondly, we were considering a youth shelter. And then finally, we were considering taking our allocation and passing it through to the county of Siskiyou. So next slide. So I did some research. Uh, it had been thrown around that we were interested in looking at partnerships. And the only partnership currently in the city of Wairega was the Beacon of Hope Partnership and their program. We all know that they are, uh, building, actively building a shelter currently. Uh, unfortunately, reaching out to Michelle O'Gorman, uh, they're not interested in grant money based off of the grant terms. Uh, just as we heard tonight about housing first, their concern is the housing first, uh, stipulation that they would have to meet. In order to receive that money. And so this kind of brings into question deeper down the road, kind of the long-term operations of the urban campground project. Uh, but we can explore alternative options, uh, but we don't know of a provider in, in Wairega or Siskiyou County really at this moment. For a shelter program, I think in the densely populated areas. And as the city or as the states roll out more money, I think that we'll have probably a poll from Reading to partner with somebody at some point. But at this point, I don't think that this is an option based off of the timing and the sensitivity to basically get a project together by May. So that we can be ready, uh, to apply for this grant. My suggestion is, is that we seek alternatives if this council wants to entertain a shelter with a different partnership. And that we take that conversation to the monthly meeting at the continuum of care advisory board. But I know that the mayor chairs currently and that works with the county and a number of different agencies. So next slide, please. So one of the options that came up or the second option was the youth shelter option. And currently, obviously all of these would have to go out to bid. We can't just say we're going to give money to a specific program. Uh, everybody has the right for a request for proposal to bid. But the one option that we do have, and we can kind of flesh out on pricing is youth empowerment Siskiyou. And Sarah Springfield is here today, uh, highly engaged. Obviously you've heard from her multiple times, uh, on her desire and what she wants to do. Now, these are very rough numbers. I know that Sarah is working on a, possibly a presentation, but also just kind of, uh, itemizing costs. But right now I am speculating we're in the $400,000 a year, a request is what yes would be requesting. And so that makes the five-year need roughly $2 million. And obviously our five-year allocation is just over $600,000. Uh, so if we were to pursue this, we would be looking at what we've already discussed, which is the cities of Montague, Etina, Mount Shasta, Fort Jones. Which is just over $2.3 million pooling those resources, going to the other cities, Doris, Tulley, Lakeweed, Dunsmere. And advising that they pass their money on to the county because the county can use that money for their current programs. So next slide, please. So the other option, and I will admit it is absolutely the easiest option is just to pass this money on to the county. If Wairega funds, yes, then there is no funding left. So that would be if we decided that we did want to meet the needs that they're asking for, which is roughly $2 million over five years. We don't have any other money to play with. So the question kind of answers itself. And then we would advise the other cities to pass their money to the county. So next slide, please. So this was the breakdown of how much money was allocated to each of the incorporated cities and then the county itself. It's just about four and a half million dollars over a five-year period. And then there's the breakdown of the cities that have already engaged us that want to pass the money over to us to do a program. I feel pretty secure. I have not talked to them again since the last meeting. Uh, but with your guidance, we would secure this funding. We would go get the resolutions. We would bring that information back to you guys. Uh, get that approved and then we would be ready in May to actually apply for a grant. So next slide, please. So the feasible option, the way I see it at this moment is either the youth option or the county option. Um, and like I said before, if we choose a youth option, then that leaves no funding left. And so I'm here today as a discussion to ask, I guess, yourselves, and then the public can comment on this as well. Is, shall we proceed with organizing an application for the youth, in which case we would then go to all these other cities, get the resolutions in order, secure the funding. And then be ready, really ahead of the game, which is kind of difficult in government, but we would be working with that agency before the application could be submitted in May. And then we would be able to bring that back to you for approval at some point in May before the submission actually was completed. So that's the discussion topic on the PLHA grant for tonight.
Great. Well, I'm going to open it up to the council for comments, concerns and opinions. Do you want to hear from the public first? Would you guys like to hear from the public first?
That's usually.
Okay. So I'll open up for the public, uh, member of the public who has your opportunity to ask questions and concerns about this, uh, program. A lot of, I know some individuals haven't been here for, for this. Um, so as it was brought to our attention. That this, uh, grant was actually available a couple of years ago. Federal grant, federal grant, right? Yeah, federal or state, state. I keep getting that confused. State grant that, um. Um, is actually a big pool of money, but it's, it's geared to certain topics of what you can do, use it for. And that's what we've been discussing in the past, quite a few meetings now, what can it be used for? And that's why it's been narrowed down to these three things. Uh, obviously one of them we've talked about is homelessness, trying to figure out how to fix the problem. And there's one of the, or one way to fix it. Uh, Sarah will come up here and speak on behalf of yes. And conjunction to that, her organization that she oversees, um, helps youth from becoming homeless. So it's, it's actually stops it from starting, basically is what it helps, what it amounts to. So, uh, Sarah, if you want to come up and speak on behalf of yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and City Manager. I think that was a lot of, um, good information. I did want to flesh out to clarify that, um, if the entirety of the five-year allocation, um, were directed to youth services. Um, that, you know, we're going back to funds that were derived from 2019 real estate fees. So that would stretch us five years forward into the next grant performance period. So, um, the city would have the opportunity to pull funds with other cities or to apply for its own allocation in another two years. And, uh, the youth shelter could still, would still be funded three years into that application, right? So we're reaching back for 2019 funds that would fund us through. So the city will have another opportunity to direct funds to other projects in just two years. And the youth shelter could still be funded for three years into the next performance cycle. Was that clear? I feel like I talked in circles, but it's late. Um, so I just, I want to urge the council to direct these, um, resources to our community's youth. Um, I think most of the folks in the room have heard my pitch for that quite a few times. Um, it was really interesting. I was just getting off work. I was going to, planning on taking a little break in between, um, my office time today and coming over to the meeting. And I got a call at about, um, five fifteen or five twenty, um, from the Office of Ed. Um, a seventeen-year-old had reached out to a teacher, um, and to see if, uh, the teacher could help her find a place to sleep for the night. The teacher had reached out to her principal. The principal reached out to the Office of Ed, Office of Ed reached out to me. We were in a, we were making phone calls, checking grant rules, trying to figure out a place. Um, where this seventeen-year-old could stay and be safe for the night, be warm and safe for the night. Um, and it just highlighted so poignantly the need that we have for a shelter. Um, with youth, there's a real opportunity to capitalize, um, on, on these limited resources. Uh, because we have an opportunity to interrupt homelessness at the root. We have, um, better chances of making a significant impact. Um, so that folks can transition out of homelessness when we're working with young people. Um, and especially when we're doing the sort of wraparound services that youth empowerment Siskiyou is already providing. Um, we have our, uh, case management that we've been providing for six months now for youth experiencing homelessness. Um, we're actually excited to announce that, um, we're going to start providing, uh, therapy. We have a clinician on staff now, um, who's going to start providing therapy at our office. Um, we have a variety of other programs where we're working with, uh, youth and families, um, who have been exposed to the sort of traumas that often project folks into homelessness. So we are, uh, well-versed in these issues, experienced at this work. The, um, agency's been around for 12 years. And even though we've just started, um, getting involved in housing services in the last couple of years, it's, it's very much drawn off of the work that we've been doing with foster youth for over a decade. So, um, the need is high, right? I, we were struggling just tonight to find a place, um, for a seventeen-year-old to sleep inside. Um, we have a facility. Um, we have a lot of flexibility in the services that we're able to provide as a private nonprofit. Um, we are highly motivated, highly engaged. Um, and yeah, and we'll, we will make really good use of these funds in a way that makes a dramatic impact in the city of Wairega and throughout the county. So.
I'm sorry, we gotta, you gotta come up with a mic.
His absence is a public comment. Yes, yes.
Yeah, and it's. It's, uh, directly in relation to the, um, item.
Yes. Um, you know, the sheriff brought up a good program that we have with his, uh, the work program he has over there with the addicted people. And the, the convicts and stuff. And you know, when I was doing the, the, uh, brick around the minor here at the entry into town. I worked with a couple of people from there and, and they were just so happy to give back to the community. It was a great program. You know, worked through the county, through us, not the state. That's the same old thing I'm beating down the, the, the same old road is that the state, where are they getting all this money for these grants? It's just like the government, straight out of the, out of thin air. There's no money for these grants and all these young people. In my day, we never heard the word grants before. We never heard it and we took care of ourselves. Now the, the only language out there is grants. It, it just seems like we're going down a socialistic road and it's not going to get, it's never going to stop. It's just going to get, it's, it's a snowball.
Oh, is this, is this pertaining to this PLHA grant?
Right. I saw this, this, uh, building just the other day and I went, wow, that's great. A place for youth to go to get a job. But now I find out, and I've kind of assumed that it was, uh, you know, gun. But now I find out, and I've kind of assumed that it was, you know, gun, California-funded, once again with grants that the money comes out of space. You know, if we were the state of Jefferson, if we were the, kept our money here from the camp, from the state and kept our money in the county, we could take care of ourselves. And if all the counties started to do that again, we could turn California around to what the counties wanted to be. And not have to have all these grants.
You're against the grant going to, I just want some clarification. You're against the grant going to the youth, is that what you're saying?
No.
Okay.
Well, I'm against grants. Yes, I'm all for help and use. I'm all for help and use. Hell, yeah, I've been a karate coach. I've seen the difference in help and use through my own work, though, not the state of California.
Thank you. Yes.
Also, I think it's, this reminded me that these are locally generated funds, right? Which I know that the council knows that residents in Siskiyou County have already paid our share, and this is our chance to bring these resources back in, and that if we don't access them, they will go to the state. And so this is our, this is our chance to bring that money that we've already paid in real estate transaction fees back into our community for our youth. And I also wanted to, I forgot to mention this earlier, that, you know, the allocations from Montague and Fort Jones, a lot of the other cities who are interested in pooling funds. Montague and Fort Jones are committed to having their pooled allocations go to youth services. And I went to the Montague City Council meeting two weeks ago, last week. Fort Jones City Council meeting was actually tonight. It's usually on Mondays. So I was supposed to be there, be in two places at once. But both Fort Jones and Montague want their allocations to be directed to youth and are interested in adding that specified language in their resolution. And so that's just something that I would urge the council to consider, right? Is that as a nonprofit, that we have the ability to be centered in Wairika and provide a resource to Wairika in building the shelter, and also to have that county-wide reach in partnership with those other cities who are wanting to pool their allocations with the city of Wairika. Thanks.
And if there's a member of the audience that has any more questions, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Counsel, what's comments, concerns?
Sarah, what's the age that you will be serving?
So for the shelter, we're going to go up to age 25. Thirteen to 25.
Thank you.
Transition age youth, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we have a lot. If we stopped at eighteen, honestly, we would be missing a lot of the homeless youth population. We have a lot of foster youth who are currently on our caseload in other programs who turn eighteen and age out of foster care and have nowhere to go the day after their eighteenth birthday. And they don't have a lot of the life skills that would enable them to find a place or a family safety net, like a lot of our teens do. To have, to be able to stay at home, to be able to transition into community college or work environment, and they need that step.
Appeal 94142 in education recognizes till twenty, till the birthday after 22.
Right.
But prior to 23. And then the other thing now is that the British in the last four years, behaviorists are now saying that adolescence goes to, actually, it's going to about 29 to 30.
Oh, yeah, as far as brain development, yeah.
For whatever reason, they're not growing up.
Yeah. Yeah. And there's an option for extended foster care to age 21. So that's already something, you know, that the state has identified that this transition age youth population needs those additional resources, but also for kids who are brought into foster care, you know, not all of them want to stay involved in this until age 21, and they still need a housing resource and assistance.
Sarah, when you're out doing the point in time count, how many youth did you encounter?
I didn't, because I was just in that one area. We had one person, so I guess one person under age 25. But the rest of my staff who were doing the creekway more, they encountered a significant portion, yeah. And statistically, across the US, and then we see this reflected also in our point in time count from, was it 2020 was the last year? That it's about a third of our homeless population are under that age 25. And that actually renders invisible a lot of the youth who are experiencing homelessness because it excludes couch surfing. So we have a lot of youth who are not even counted in those point in time count numbers who are technically housed because they were sleeping on somebody else's couch that night. They're doubled up. And oftentimes, we see youth that are in pretty unsafe situations and are being exploited by adults for a safe place to sleep at night and would not count as being unhoused.
There's a lot of them that are missed, like you said. I know I used this example before, is we took in a young gal that was in high school, and her parents took off, they got divorced, and one ended up in another, two other states, and they just left her here, left her hanging. And we took her in for the last six months of her high school year, and it paid off. She went off to do great things. She actually became a famous artist in New York and went all over the place. It's neat to see those success stories, you know? And, you know, you guys can help out.
And as, as we've imagined it, as we planned it, you know, the shelter would mostly be an emergency shelter because youth often do have resources that we can help them identify for housing, right? There might be a family that maybe even lives in another county that we can make a couple of phone calls, set up a meeting, provide transportation, and try to get them in with another family. Especially because we don't have a transitional housing program yet. Really, that, you know, that would be ideal. That's the next steps in the future, hopefully. But that's a lot of the work that we do too, right? It's not just, here you have a bed to sleep in for 90 days. We're doing a lot of work the whole time to make sure that they have a place to go after that, after the time in the emergency shelter. And we additionally work with youth that are at risk of homelessness, right? So in helping them stabilize their living environments before they're on the streets, so.
And if I might add, we only had one in our group that was under 25. You know, he was twenty, he was 22, and he said he would not have taken it, you know, because he was, obviously, he was, he was at other things going on in his life. But so it's not like they're out there and they're going to be coming in from the homeless. These are kids that are in school.
These are, a lot of these kids are in school, yeah. And the Office of Ed has the best numbers to track that. And they, they say that there's over 200, you know, youth who are experiencing homelessness in our county who are enrolled in schools. But then, you know, both, you miss it from both sides because the schools count the youth that are couch surfing, but they don't count kids who aren't enrolled in schools, right? And, um, so, yeah, it's a, it's a very, it's an invisible population, right, and all the more vulnerable for it. Yeah.
I'm sorry. There is a public comment that have their hands raised. She's been sitting up there for
I'm being patient. Can you guys hear me still?
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay. So I shared with you all earlier that this is what I did my thesis around, right, was housing homeless youth. And, you know, I first want to say that, well, one, I apologize. I'm sick and I'm totally maxing out for the night. So my, my brain power is nothing right now. But the PLHA funds are our county's funds, and it's really important that we keep that funding here. If we don't use it, it's going to go to another county that does have a higher population. That's, they're, they're going to take it. So that is definitely important that we keep it in our county. Second, you know, when we talk about, it was kind of interesting while we were having this conversation, so many people in the room got up and walked away. Because we're talking about younger adults that are experiencing homelessness. I told you guys before, I was, I don't think I said my age, but I was 25 when I became homeless. And it wasn't my fault, it was somebody else's fault. But I had no resources, and that's the same thing that a lot of these kids are going through. And at that age, you know, you have no social equity of people to lean on to say, hey, I just need you to do this for me. I need you to do that for me because everybody expects you to be an adult, and it's so hard, and you're just not ready to be there yet. I wanted to share in Butte County, which is where I came from. You know, when I was finishing my master's program, I helped to start a low-barrier homeless shelter. And it's been extremely successful ever since we left. We started with housing about six people per night. And when I left Butte County, to come up here, we were housing about 95 people per night during the winter season. So it's, it's extremely successful. But we also have a lot of homeless youth that were involved in that, and we always made sure that we had a separate area for the homeless youth to be in because they are so incredibly vulnerable. Not just because of, you know, they might have resources that somebody else has, but they're just, their brains aren't developed yet, and especially when you're homeless. We know through peer-reviewed articles that what we would normally expect like a 35-year-old to know, somebody that was experiencing homelessness since they're a teen, it might take them about oh, gosh, what was it? I'm sorry, it's my sick brain. They're about 10 years delayed, which is why we consider people up to age 25 as transnational age youth. They're just not developed yet. But if they're experiencing that homelessness, then we want to push them out to like 35. So we can expect the same things for them. In Siskiyou County, or sorry, Butte County, we had the low-barrier winter shelter with the separate area for the teens and the TAME, which is transnational age youth. And it was very successful. One thing that I'm not sure if the city has considered is that it is extremely expensive to house teens and transnational age youth on their own because of the regulations that come along with that. So I'm just curious if that's something that you guys have looked into or not. No, I'll end it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Yes, Joe.
My turn? Thank you. So I do have a question because I believe that what we're talking about here is a pot of funding. And if we're interested in doing percentages and how we do it, we all want to protect the youth. I understand that. But we also have a huge homeless problem with people over 25. Quite a few more than we do that are youth. So from what I heard from our city manager is that you said there is nothing available because Beacon of Hope doesn't want to do anything that has to do with grants. So there's nothing else available. Because for me, I would rather have a balance. I definitely, I agree, I want anything that we can do to protect our youth. I totally agree with that. But I also think, to be fair, and this program is meant for more than just one sector. I think that we really need to look, I think we need to look hard at what we can do to help the rest of the homeless population. Is there something that we can do? Is there a way that we can reach out? Can we keep people safe? We're talking about keeping people safe, keeping them in the winter when we have the extreme cold, and in the summer we have the extreme heat. I would really like to see an option for the people over 25 as well as the youth.
I'm going to go up to this. Yeah, there is a number of hypotheticals that could take place. The issue that Siskiyou County and the city of Wairika has is there's no active partner that would operate a shelter other than what I am, my knowledge is, is the youth option here with yes and Sarah Springfield. In my staff report, I will show some slides of options with other funding that are available that I reached out to the city of El Monte and the city of Pomona and what they've done. There's a multitude of different funding options. PLHA has one line item where we can utilize funding in this fashion, but the majority of the funding is for housing in the sense of low-interest rate loans, you know, and so kind of running a CDBG program, which I don't think that would come later down the road because we do want to address kind of the root at the moment is to get people into housing. And then at that point, it would be a shelter, at least that's kind of the guidance that I've heard over the six weeks that I've been here, is that focus people somewhere, provide service, and then get another program or work piggyback at the COC with the county to offer eventually people, you know, crossroads would be one of those programs, which would be a transitional housing and then into long-term housing with a low-interest rate loan that many people in our community already utilize through the CDBG program with the county. But that is the issue, is that we have a time limit here. We didn't, a lot of cities, the only person, the only agency that has utilized this funding since its inception was the county. And so we're at this point where if we don't have an application prepared in May, we're going to lose out. And so seeking that partnership, which I completely agree with you, should be our intent. For this program, it probably doesn't make sense because that's going to take a lot of agencies coming together in order to get to that point. And then even having a homeless action plan, which is what they, the county brought to us today. We need a homeless action plan for the city as well in order to access certain funding. But I will show in my staff report later on this evening the option that Sarah Kellard and I have discussed that is an option hypothetically for us, but it's not the only option. There's a multitude of shelter options. It's just going to be, in my opinion, running this through the COC because we have partnerships, people that are running food banks. Sarah Springfield is engaged with yes. The county is there. Dwayne is the chair. So we already have people coming together there where we could pool funding and then get a plan, an action plan together because I think that's the issue I'm running up against is that we are not a social services city. And so we're going to seek a partnership with the county who will seek a partnership with an operator of a shelter. So if that answers your question.
Stay there.
Well, thank you for that because I didn't have all that background information. I'm glad. I know there's been a lot of talk going on for a long time because, as you know, I was part of that committee for many years. And I commend you for continuing your work and Councilmember McCoy's work on that. It's hard because no matter what we do, we're going to be criticized. There's people here tonight that are thinking all the things we're doing wrong. It's a tough job, I'm going to tell you. The whole thing that we have to remember is to be fair. That's the reason I wanted to look into the, you know, let's balance this. Yes, let's do something for the youth. And let's do something for the rest of the criteria, the people over 25. I'm glad that you're moving in that direction. I'll bite slowly because it's been a while. And so if this is the only thing that we've got going for us right now, I mean, we really don't have an option.
Yeah.
No other option. That was my question.
Except give it to the county.
Well, and, and I, I'm not sure if it
They, they would take it. I mean, I have talked to Sarah. She does not want to see these funds unused. And so they would find a program, but then we would lose any level of control.
The point is, is that, yeah, if it goes to the county, then it goes to all of the county. What I'm talking about is how do we help the homeless in Wairika since we have the funding available? I'm disappointed that there's nothing that we can do. I'm excited that there's something we can do for the youth because that's, that's critical. I mean, that is the gateway. I totally understand what Sarah's saying. But we actually have more, more people. The numbers are much higher over 25. And I just think that it's sad that we can't do anything about that.
And we, we can. We just, under this time-sensitive grant, and having not done anything for the last two years, if we don't do something in May, that means we lose two years of funding. And so there are options, though, and I think that that is the intent, that's my take. The intent of this council is to seek those options and those partnerships. And that's my suggestion is that we should take the information here that you do want an option and go work that option at the COC and then bring that option back to you.
But if we vote on this tonight, Mr. Mayor, if we vote on this tonight, then we lock up five years.
Yes, yep.
Then we would lock up five years for one cause. In other words, we wouldn't be, and I do know that there are some cities that have been encouraged by Sarah just to do for the youth. And I understand that. And that would have to go to them. I just was hoping, I guess, that maybe we could be a little more fair, a little more balanced.
Yeah, absolutely.
We, we've locked up five years, but three of it's retroactive.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, it's not, it doesn't hurt as bad. And, yeah, it sounds like that I, I think we all probably want to be fair, but it sounds like from what the city manager is saying is that this is the only real feasible outlet we have to use this money legally.
Well, it's like that the gentleman here was talking about, you know, the guy that's coming in front of his, his business every day. You know, I would love to get him some shoes. I would love to put him to work, maybe help get him some, some mental health guidance. And, and if we go all in one direction, we're not going to be able to help those people.
Actually, him, you could, because he's still classified as youth, but, yeah, he's still young enough. But this is the one individual. One was.
Anyway.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's Debbie's turn.
If that's all right. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I agree with you. And I mean, I hear, you know, there's no magic birthdate at which, you know, we, even as a youth-oriented agency, that we stop caring about people who are experiencing homelessness. It's not like, oh, now you're 26. Now, you know, we don't care anymore. It doesn't matter. And I think it's an important point that, you know, the funds that we're applying for go back to 2019. So, you know, in two years, when we're, probably a year, right? When we're starting this process again for the next year, next five years allocation. That Youth Empowerment Siskiyou will be back asking for less for youth services if we get this five-year allocation now. Because that will stretch us into the next allocation period that will fund us through that. And that, and I think that two years will be a chance to really develop. Adult oriented services, right? And like Dwayne and Paul, then, you know, I'm on the COC advisory board too. And it's a huge need and it's a disappointment to hear that there's not an option for an adult shelter, right? For a service provider. It is, it is really disappointing and disheartening to hear. And I think that that's a wonderful goal for the COC to take on over the next years and be prepared. For the next allocation period to become, to come back with a, with a service plan, right? And as a nonprofit, also, we have opportunities to pursue other funding, right? And if it's one thing that I found in this position, it's if you build it, they will come. And by that, I mean the funders, right? And we had no shot at, at shelter operating costs before we started doing case management. And we were scraping together pennies out of funding that was barely supposed to be used for that to try to do case management. Because we knew that that would attract funders who would allow us to build out our services for youth experiencing homelessness. And so it would be my goal to not have our shelter be entirely reliant on a permanent local housing allocation. Even though this is a very exciting opportunity that is a permanent funding source because we don't often see that in housing services. As, it serves me as a nonprofit to diversify my funding sources and then I can do more things, be more, have more flexibility. Provide more individualized programming. And so it would be my goal that in a couple of years, I'm, you know, we're not back asking for the entire allocation to be directed towards youth. Because we're still working off of the 2019, 2020, 21 allocations. And also that I'm able to bring in other private funding sources, other federal funding sources, other state funding sources that can complement and build out our programming. I think that hopefully that balance can be achieved, right? As we're bringing up those other resources throughout the county to provide those adult services.
Yes, please. Young man. Is that okay to say?
I don't think so. It's probably sexist.
Sir. How many grants are we working on currently? And second part of the question. Will we have staffing available to follow this through? If we accept the yes as the project? Or because I don't, I don't want to. Go down that road unless we can give it 100%. And I am worried because we have our fingers in a lot of pies.
That's 5%, that's all we get, 5% for admin.
That's a great question. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head how many grants. I mean, I think you've seen the grants come in. We have the Red Scarp Society in here for a grant. So there's another grant. We have a multitude of grants through the water fund that we're working on the sewer system on right now. Obviously, we have the pool grant. I mean, we have a large number of grants. This would be, in my opinion, the most active participating grant. We would need to utilize our resources on this grant more so than others. From my understanding, talking to our compliance, our grant compliance manager. And so you do bring up a very good fear that I think that we can recognize, we're not voting on applying for anything tonight. We're just looking for direction on. My purse, my take as a city manager is, is that we could allocate as a percentage 50% all age and 50% youth. And then we could get that grant. And then we, you know, after we get approved here, we could go out to bid for an all, an all age with really, to be completely honest with you. Not enough money to start anything and no interest because there's no partnership. And so we would then have to go back to the granting agency and ask if we can then divert those funds again, maybe to Yes or someone who's more actively participating in our community. So tonight, I'm just looking for, kind of to put this to rest at, at future city council meetings until we have a grant application that we would seek approval on. And then we would basically vet those questions out with Joshua Stan Shaw. Obviously, we met his wife tonight, who's the volunteer firefighter. So he is our grant compliance manager. And so, but it would also be an opportunity to fund his position as well. Because we are, we would be getting a decent amount of money. Because all the money that was flowing into the city, that $2.3 million, it's 5% of that over five years. So we're talking $23,000 a year that then can supplement his salary to do the compliance on that. So technically, we do have a position. But how difficult is it to run this particular grant? We don't know because we have not run one of these. It's very similar to CDBG. The feedback I'm getting right now is that people are concerned about exactly what you're talking about. That doing the compliance quarterly can be a difficult proposition, so.
That's my concern.
And that's, and that's good because I think we need to have probably. A little bit more clarity on what it's going to cost us as a city. Because as city staff time and whatnot, we need, we need to do our due diligence to find out on that. I have down here, we have a list on what that grant. It's five years. Wairika was, we'd get, 5% is $30,000, $30,602. I got all the numbers, whoever, it depends on who's all participating. Montague would be $20,000 for five years, $2,617. Fort Jones, another $20,750. And another $20,000. So and Mount Shasta was interested, $26,965. So there is definitely, when you start pulling all these in together and that 5%, that number starts obviously growing and growing and growing. We got 30 and 20 and 20 and 20. Now we have quite a bit of money of admin that we could use for that. And breaking that down, I broke it down for just ours only, but year wise, you're looking at, you know, $6,000 a year. Which is 102 hours approximately for just our pool, that money. So there isn't 102 hours would be sustainable.
$30,602 for our part for admin.
That's for five years.
Right, right. That's not per year, right? That's for five.
That's for five, yeah, that's what I said. And you get back to the years and it breaks it down, breaks it all down there. But that's what I'm saying, there's, if you start pulling everybody's in together, then it's become substantial. And then you got, like I said, it's, you start breaking that down. Ours alone is a, I broke it down to 102 hours a year. We can, I feel, breaking it down by wages and whatnot that we'd be spending on that. But that's, that's where we need some clarity. That's just my, my speculation on that would be 102 hours a year of admin time, just for our pool only, our 30,000 of that. So, so yeah, that's something that is that's.
We'll probably go in a hole.
That's what we need to find out. We need to find out the clarity on that. Because, you know, like I said, if you start getting a bunch of them pulled in together. And they're only using it for one specific thing, then there's not a lot of tracking that we have to do. If you have it on numerous different things, then there's a lot more tracking that needs to take place. So if it's one, if it all goes to one specific thing, there's a lot less tracking going on, a lot less administrative hours that need to go to that. So then it's actually is, is beneficial for everybody then at that point in time, so.
All the more reason.
Yes, Ms. McCoy.
Go back to city manager. What is it that you specifically are looking for from us?
I'm looking for a consensus with my opinion that our focus, if we do apply for this grant, should be focused around the youth shelter. And then that way, we would essentially drop this from the future meeting. We've been covering it every two weeks. Then we would focus on developing the spreadsheet that the mayor has referenced. And, and councilwoman Baird has referenced as well. And then we would bring that back at a later date prior to May to flesh out what the cost looks like to us. And I will say, generally speak, I mean, it, it depends. I guess we, we need to wait and get those numbers back to you. But essentially, it gives, it would provide us direction that yes, if we do in fact apply for this grant, we know that we're going to do it for youth. And then we would start actively seeking those resolutions hypothetically, at least getting them prepared with the other cities. Securing that funding. And then I would probably reach out to the county and let them know this was the direction we were going. But that there was a chance if we felt like the costs were too prohibitive out of pocket based off of what we brought to you. We may not try to access that funding because we do not want to leave this on the table. So we would then be passing all the money to the county so they could expect hypothetically that that was an option. So they were prepared for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. Addressing you, I would support moving forward with this. I would support 100% of it going to YES. Again, I can only talk about it from the standpoint of grants that I did and followed as an, in education for 30 years. And part of the cost of doing business is, is tracking the grants and, and, and there's a, there's a lot with education. But we already have a person hired here. And I know what everybody will say, well, we don't want to work them too much, but we already have them hired. So what this is going to bring to us is it's going to bring to us. It sounds like part of that person's pay.
Yeah.
For part of their salary and benefits for up to five years. Again, they are, it's a cost of doing business because they're already, we're already paying them. Okay? And, and we, and we don't know, honest, honestly, we don't know how much time it's going to take. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna support it. And I've done Title I grants like crazy for, for Wairique Elementary District for like 12 years. I mean, there was nothing, there's no more paperwork than a Title I grant to the federal government. And I just think that this is probably going to be worth it. And then if it, then we, we're going to have to re, I would say we have to kind of follow it and reevaluate it. The staff will have to reevaluate it, see how they feel about it. Sarah's gonna, you know, she'll reevaluate it. And I mean, because also she's got a part in this that she'll have to obviously be submitting things. And it also has to have, all of the other cities have to go along with this. I mean, if, if we get two or three to pull out or to review, we need 2%. Well, you know, why are we doing it for you? You do it for yourself.
Yeah.
So in short, I will support it to, to, to get it off the agenda and to begin. I mean, not to get off the agenda, but so that we can begin, we have other things to discuss. Yeah, we'll bring it back later.
Definitely don't want to interrupt that momentum. But to speak to the issue of reporting, I would also encourage the city, if they were to, if the city were to direct. These funds to youth services to consider the ways in the RFP that they might be able to transfer. Or what portion of the responsibility they can transfer to the contractor, right? And what qualifications they might seek from the contractor. And experiencing this grant reporting, you know, Youth Empowerment Siskiyou were almost entirely grant funded. Through a variety of federal, state and private sources. And grant reporting and management is my life. Like that's, it's 85% of my job. And, and I know that there, there's a significant portion that the city will always have to bear responsibility for.
You have to do your part, we have to do our.
Well, and I would encourage the city to, you know, think creatively to how to pass as much of that responsibility as possible onto the contractor, right? And try to limit the city's, the city's financial liability for those hours. And I think there are ways to do that. And we see that with a lot of our subcontracts that we have through the county, for instance, right? That they have their obligations and they think very carefully in crafting which parts of that we can, we can spend our staff time meeting instead of. And which parts have to be left to, to, to city staff.
Okay. Around the room here, Corey. This is your direction or opinion because right now it's not necessarily, we're just kind of getting consensus.
I echo everything Councilman McCoy said, and I totally support moving in that direction.
Jump over to. Jones Smith, we would see you. Thank you.
I go, hi, Nat. Hi, Robin. Close the door on your way out. It's cold out there. So, yeah, I, I think that this is a no-brainer, obviously. We don't have the option of going for the all-age shelter. So, and I, and I think this is a good project. It's not that I don't think it's a good project, I'm just disappointed we can't.
Yeah. Find a balance.
And if we can't do both, then yes, obviously we should fund the, the youth program.
And this is one of those things, at this point of consensus too, is he's, you know, Jason's going to do some more research and move us forward on that. If something does come forward, it's not, we're not voting on it tonight, just so you know that. We're giving the consensus to move forward.
Yeah, that's correct. This just provides the direction to staff that we know we're actively moving forward on a project you would like vetted out.
Exactly.
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, as long as we have active staff. Do it in a timely and efficient manner.
Staffing and funding, yeah.
Yep, and I totally agree on all parts of that, you know? It's a, it's a bummer that we can't, couldn't work with the Beacon of Hope and got something going there. Really disappointed on that aspect. I can understand their, their take on it because the guidelines that they have to follow is they don't want to be as restrictive. So that's a bummer. Unfortunately, we pay the price as a city. But we can hit it off at the past with helping the youth and that's what we need to do. So that's first and foremost. And like I said, you'll bring back those statistics as far as being able to administrative part of that. And I know because I don't know how accurate mine are, that's just speculation of wages and injunction to what I say the hours would be and whatnot. So I think we, that's great that we move forward. So yes, thank you, thank you. Okay, then the, the next topic. Yes. 6B, discussion possible action, city manager, emergency warming shelter.
So this topic has been obviously following the same trend as the last topic since I started here about six weeks ago. And so last time. We had discussed, and if you can please move to the next slide, Arthur. We had discussed two options. Really, we were headed down the path of possibly vetting out the community center. And then we had an idea, a member of the public here was interested in the fabric tent. And Councilman McCoy wanted me to vet that out a little bit. So I haven't really done any more work on the community center option. That one's still sitting on the table. I do have a diagram to share with you guys this evening with that. But I did get in touch with the sales, one of the salespeople for the fabric tent. I also think that the city should consider that whatever is done for a warming shelter will require some level of social service. And that this would also be an opportunity to really get direction that your intent is yes, we do want a warming shelter. We support a warming shelter and that this conversation would also take place at the public meeting of the COC. Because all the resources are there. And really, I think that the county will play a crucial role in this, just like they did when they opened up Behavioral Health in the last two months. So Arthur, please, next slide. So this is just a diagram here of the community center. And I think you can see on the bottom of the screen. That is where I believe we would be talking about that rectangle.
Correct.
We would partition that off. And then we would also partition off after the main public entrance in the very center left of the screen. So that the upper portion was partitioned off. And so we would have the restrooms and then also the, a third of the space that looks out back down Oregon Street. That would be our intention if we were to open the community center. And I believe that most of the council during the point in time had the same idea and looked at this space. So next slide, please. So Creative Tent International was kind of the guidance I was given last time I came. I believe that was the organization, that's the one I contacted. So I hope that's the organization. So they make a really cool product and they're military-based products. They put these tents up everywhere. This is just pulled from their website. They can withhold 90 mile per hour winds. The one that I had vetted out has a snow load that meets our local requirements. So as you can see, the scale of these is, is rather large and then can also be relatively small. Next slide, please. So this is a very small option, but this just kind of gives you an idea. I believe this is the 10 by 20 option. There are no tools required to put this thing up. An option like this, I believe, takes. There are no tools required to put this thing up. An option like this, I believe, takes about one hour to prop up. Next slide, please. So, yeah, the option that I had vetted out was a 20 by 20, but all of these can be built upon. So if we did decide to go in this direction, we could buy a 20 by 20, and then we could buy more pieces to create a 20 by 40 and so on. And then you could see some of the, some of the items here down on the bottom right corner. So for a 20 by 40, they're claiming a one to two hour, a one to, one to two hour installation time, and no tools required whatsoever. Next slide, please. So the recommendation from the sales agent was a 20 by 20, which is obviously 400 square feet tent. Also adding into that an inside liner to keep things warmer, better temperature control. It would have connection for an HVAC system. It's snow load compliant, and obviously it can withhold up to 90 mile-per-hour winds. The rough cost without shipping is roughly $12,000 on something like this, and we can expand it to a 20 by 40. This, having this conversation was all based around asphalt and a parking lot, essentially. I think if you did want to go in this direction, we should just arbitrarily say it's $20,000 and whatever accoutrements you wanted to add, and then the shipping cost would be covered, and we would probably come in at less than that. So. Next slide, Arthur. Oh, ARPA money? I'm not sure I could bet that question out. I can find out the answer to that. It just, and it just leads to what the intention is here, because we can prop a tent up, we can open a warming shelter. I just don't suggest that we do it alone. I suggest that we get a partnership, really primarily with the county that has health specialists that can be on site to deal with issues that I think that the churches have dealt with. Obviously, needles in the bathroom, meth pipes in the bathroom. It would be housing-first type situation. We would just be taking whoever came in there, although this is not grant-funded. So that's important to know. This is general fund or ARPA-type funding. So I guess we could hypothetically create our own screening process if we're using the general fund money. So, yeah.
Well, yeah, that was my general question, is that I was looking for a funding source, since funding is short these days. But we do have our fully-loaded police department. I don't want anybody to think that we're short on the police, we're not. But anyway, yes, that was, that was my question, is that if we could fund it out of another source other than the general fund, $20,000, I think it's a great idea to partner with the county. I'm sure that there's some funding maybe with Dr. Korn or with Shelley Davis and Public Health.
Yeah, and I think if, I think that they had mentioned in the past some, you know, reference to skin in the game type situation. And so if we're partnering and putting up a $20,000 tent and we're reliant on them to staff it, I think that's a reasonable ask, but that's a question that we would have to pose. And my suggestion would be to pose it at the C O C to them, so that there was a joint effort.
May I ask a zoning question? I think Juliana's probably gone.
She is gone, yes.
Jerry, I don't know what you know about, but what about putting, if we were to take this, because I know Beacon of Hope has talked about it, and put it on their property. I mean, because, I mean, assuming maybe you're working with the county still, but putting it on their property, because they have plenty of property to put a tent on, and they've talked about doing it before.
On whose property?
Beacon of Hope.
But they don't want to have anything to do with anything that would have a grant, so that would leave them out.
Well, this isn't a grant. This isn't a grant, yeah.
We were talking about another source.
Well, so there's other, there's other things in conjunction to that, so this brings up a good point on where to put it, you know, property-wise. And another thing I mentioned to Jason is right next to Behavioral Health, setting up right next to Behavioral Health. Yeah, that's their property right there, so something that we.
He wanted it in a parking lot.
Yeah.
Well, I know, I know the Beacon of Hope has asked several times in the year and a half I work with them, if we could put a tent there, and they were advised for warming. And they were advised by the city that that could not be done. Could not be done, yes. The city manager, and I think it was city manager. Yeah, so that's the only reason I bring it up, because I know that they have wanted to do something too, and I'm not.
Oh, I know, it was the C A O, County Administrative Officer, also told Public Health that they couldn't do it. Because when we were originally looking for a location and we ended up in Behavioral Health, they were looking at a tent they were going to put in the fairgrounds, and the C A O said no.
Yeah, the fairgrounds, yeah.
Thank you.
No, it was the tent that she said no to.
But Mr. McCoy, I can vet that out, but that is also another opportunity, because I believe participation from Beacon of Hope happens at the C O C, and maybe you can clarify that.
Yeah, we can bring that discussion up at the next meeting, which will be.
I like the, I like the property next to Behavioral Health. Better location, more resources around there, restaurants, food. What ended the Behavioral Health.
Yeah, we can probably use their power and stuff too. Yes, Don Marie, I know, yes.
Okay, Don Marie, my question is this, are we building this to save lives? Then why would we put it clear down there where they're not going to go? Are we going to bus them down there?
Down where?
Down at the community center, where no one's at.
We were looking for, we were just looking at options.
I understand that, but I'm saying to you, we need to put them where they already are to save lives. Otherwise, we've got to bus them if we want to save lives.
We also have something to get, you know, what you've been saying is we need a place right now, so.
I know, and right now would be the tent, you know, would be the tent, the way to go. Because it's just, it's just for an emergency when it's this cold out there to save lives. And we don't want to make them comfortable. No, we don't want to keep them as house guests. We just want to make them alive.
No, I agree, but is it sooner the better? So if it takes six months to get a tent, would you whether wait for the tent, or would you rather go to the community center?
If you're going to bus them there at community center tonight, are you going to bus them?
That's, I have no way of forcing a bus out there, no.
No, see, that's my point, and I understand that you don't have a tent either, you know, yeah, I know, I know. That's all I'm just saying, keep that in mind, please.
Yeah, absolutely, come on up to the mic.
It wants us out of here.
All right, just, just real quick, if something like this is going to come out of general fund, are you looking into anyone else besides this one website, or are you going to put stuff like local contracts and? Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's.
I would have to look at our procurement policy, generally like on a public works project, you can spend up to $30,000 out of pocket on an item.
I'm just thinking, and I mean, for a 20 by 20 tent, that seems really expensive.
No, we'll do more, we're gonna do more research.
$12,000 for a 20 by 20 and $20,000 for the bigger one, is that right?
It's $12,000 for the snow-loaded lined tent with those options, 10 by 20. And so I'm saying with shipping cost, it's, it's better to overestimate when you.
Okay, but that'll go out public bid.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll definitely, no, I realize what you're saying, it doesn't have to because there's the threshold, but we're going to do more research.
And we haven't even decided on whether or not we're purchasing a tent.
Right, right, I'm just saying, I mean, it seems like that's, you know, the consensus was looking like that's going to be the easiest option. I just would hope that that would go out.
We'd do more research for sure, yeah, for sure.
The only reason we started looking at those was because we have a source out in Shastina that leases them to the military.
They sold it.
Okay, but that's the reason we started looking. At that time, we were looking for military-grade tents, something that's got a little more beef to it, because they're going to be pulled down and stored, and they're going to have to be, they're going to be repaired like crazy, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's out of Reno, but they sold it and moved back. Or was it Las Vegas?
Yes, Lorenzo.
Lorenzo Love, you need to expand this to a cooling shelter also.
It will be.
Yeah, because more people die.
As we said, it had HVAC system in it, so HVAC that covers both ends.
Because before people die of heat stress, they do a cold.
No, that's, it will be that way.
That makes sense, yeah.
Okay, any other comments, and we need to give them some type of direction?
Yeah, what would you like me to focus on over the next couple of weeks?
I think we need to, it's my, I'm not speaking for everybody else, is I think we need to bring this in front of the C O C for options with them and how to direct it. I think we need to look at other tent options to see what other buildings or tent options are available out there to make sure that we're covering everything that's out there. And then, like I said, being able to speak with the C O C and seeing maybe if we can use the property next to it. And let's see, I think we just expand on that. Our next step is to see where we are with the county and the C O C and where we can expand on that and move forward as rapidly as possible, because just like Don Marie stated, this has gotten way too long.
One other aspect, if I may, in the round circle, is that some of these companies also offer a liveback policy. If there's any recycled, we might be able to get a break on it, because I'm not sure that a brand new one is going to last very long.
It's definitely, that's a good option.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, but it sounds like the number one option is a tent then, and I should focus on that? Okay. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
We can certainly ask if that's what you'd like me to do, if you would.
Yeah. Sure. Does anybody, anybody else have some suggestions for Jason to move forward on? I think it's first and foremost is go with those suggestions on moving forward, so we can move. I mean, I look at my next meeting, I think it's two weeks or next C O C meeting.
Depending how quickly we could do it, it might be a better option.
I can have it put on the agenda for the C O C meeting, so. Oh, what's our? Yeah, we should look.
We actually have a portable one that's down at the community theater that we might be able to use, because we're putting a new one in the community theater, so I think we already have one.
Yeah.
Well, no, we rent that one. Yeah, we do not own it.
Oh, I thought we bought it.
I was under the impression we owned it, yeah.
Okay.
I think we own it.
Okay, then I, I stand corrected, because last city manager told us that we rented it. But I think, I'm in agreement with you, I think we need to go through C O C, but I also think we need to just look at different tents. I'm in agreement that we, you know, we can find a used one, but I think it needs to be a military-grade. You're going to get what you pay for. You buy a cheap tent, you're going to have a cheap tent. I mean, you know, I can't in the same tent that I bought 38 years ago and paid a pretty price for, but I've used it all over the United States. So you're going to, but in a commercial you're going to get, and then what you pay for. And then we are going to need HVAC and heaters. And the thing that we have to remember about HVAC and the heater particularly is that the heater, the real issue with having heaters in there, if you had the kind that stand, you have to worry about them. Yeah, you have to worry about them venting, and you have to worry about them heating up the top. And that's why if you have an HVAC system that, I mean, it's going to be worth the cost, it's going to be easier to move in, easier to move out.
Well, another thing to look at too, as far as getting back to tent, if we ever lift our mask restrictions, then a lot of these places, restaurants and stuff, might be willing to sell some of these tents for inexpensive prices. Not a military grade, no, but Jeff, Jeff might be able to sell his off of Ace, and that they have down at the steakhouse.
And just to clarify, because I know we're kind of on some level getting ahead of ourselves, because it, to me, the issue is not so much we know we can go buy an HVAC, we can go buy all of those accoutrements. I think right now we don't know if we have a partnership, and I don't know if it's feasible to place this on county property. And so my suggestion is we focus our attention over the next two weeks on that partnership. And if they're interested, then we go down vetting all of the other pieces that everybody's mentioning here tonight, so.
I agree, council, council came with that. Okay, great.
We were talking about the trigger, if it's 30 degrees, 32 degrees, if it's 90 degrees.
Because if we're talking about, you know, that it's going to be out to the C O C, we're already in the first week of March, right? And so it sounded to me like it's not going to be something that might even be open this winter, right? Because we're going to be moving into warmer temperatures, so I guess I'm just curious, especially just for training purposes, right? If we're going to see any of that, and also just because it is still really cold outside right now. And I saw there was supposed to be predicted for an 18-degree night on Monday, I think. So I'd love to hear discussion on that. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, cold and windy, yeah.
Fortsides have been dry.
Trigger, I mean, I do think 32 is not going to cut it, because you're going to be, you're going to be open every night. You're going to be open three weeks in a row.
Probably, yeah.
So I think, I think.
We haven't added anything above freezing for the last two months.
I think maybe what we might do, because I think Sarah's got a good idea, but I think maybe what we do is direct the city manager to do some calling around to places like Susanville, Grants Pass, Ashland, Medford, and then, you know, but pick a couple of, you know, like Susanville, Janes, Janesville won't have it, but. Yeah, and see what they do, if they have anything like that. McLeod, I'm not McLeod, MacArthur, Bernie, yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I don't know how you feel about it, council persons, but I mean, if he could do that.
I think we need some more comparison for sure, and soon.
Are there like contingency plans, like while we're pursuing the tent option, that if it does drop to 14 degrees or 12 degrees in the two weeks while we're working on a partnership with Behavioral Health, that we can host it at the community center? Is that, is that what the plan is, or are we, how is that?
Good question, we haven't really worked that, but we need to, we need to figure out what that looks like to be able to bring it forward.
No, I can, I would love to plan one. I mean, I can, I can build one and when we need it, right? But the more notice, or the more ability to plan it to fit it into the schedule and not have to bump other things off, the better, right? Yeah. Wonderful, yeah, because they can get started on the online portion and doing the workbook and stuff, which will make the in-person part easier and quicker. What was that? If you send me an email, I have to set up registration, yeah. So if, actually, if anybody's interested, sarah@yescu.org, send me an email, yeah.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, and then we'll need to figure that out, we need to get to the C O C. All righty, anything else? Okay, so then we are off to last little bit, that's city manager's staff report.
Arthur, can you hit me again?
Don't hit him hard, we need him.
Yeah, just go ahead and move on to the next slide, please. So since the last meeting, Wednesday morning after the last meeting, I went off to moderate at the city manager conference and. and really focused on the housing issue, whether it be the housing element or the unhoused. And my last two, this is very brief, my last two slides focus on that. I went to a cross point on last Monday, they are doing a community meeting on how they want to engage the unhoused, there are many members that were, or members of the public here tonight that were at that meeting. Their focus is really to compile information on resources, that's how they feel like they're going to be uh, be best suited in this issue, so they're not looking to open a shelter or anything like that, they just want to compile all the data and then be able to provide that data to unhoused people, kind of consolidating all the possible resources, is where you can get food, is where you can get clothing. This is when you would go to get social services and who you would talk to. Uh, we had a pool meeting, was that this week, Joan?
Part of my report, yeah.
So.
Well, it was actually two ten.
Okay, so, yeah, the the time is going by very quickly, but we had a pool meeting and then, um, Robin Richards was in my office today. We flushed more of this, uh, pool grant out, at some point we will be coming forward when we get the operating and maintenance costs firmed up. We will be coming to the council to provide that information and get better direction. Um, we have started internally vetting one of the projects that is budgeted, and that is the city hall construction project, which, uh, basically gets us the ADA compliant bathrooms and then takes the two buildings. So we're at the, just discussing that internally. And so there's more information to come on that, but we're trying to see if that's really feasible with one point two five million dollars that's allocated uh, for that project. Um, the shopping cart ordinance, I did, uh, talk to Rite Aid corporate. They had left a message on the phone, but I just got Randy's old cell phone, so. Um, I talked to them, they're highly engaged, they're looking at that now, and then tomorrow code enforcement and I, uh, two o'clock are going to go around to the shop owners and, uh, discuss the ordinance in person, so people are familiar with it. Uh, a couple of members of the public here tonight, the garden club, I went and met with them, uh, they meet at Ming's. Periodically, it was two ten, uh, that evening. I have vision of basically improving the flower beds that are on Minor Street and then periodically throughout the city that are our responsibility, I would like to see, I think there's a cheap way to rejuvenate those, and that is my vision at some point. My vision at the moment is to work with a nonprofit, possibly pass through money, but I'm working on that kind of as a side project because I think it lifts morale within the city when, especially Minor Street, has, uh, some beautification, some really low budget beautification.
Did you, have you talked to Celia about that?
Absolutely, so.
She's like, she was one of the main ones, was in charge of that, her and Steve were doing that for quite a while.
Yeah, and that's who I met, uh, at the gar, they're a part of the garden club, and so Peggy, I think, is the uh, the president possibly of that club, so we're working out whether or not they could take on that ability, but there's other options that I can look at, um, even chamber or rotary or Elks for that matter, you know, or businesses down Minor Street. So that's just a side pet project of mine, um, it's not a huge priority, but it's something I'm working on. Uh, friends of the library, went and met with Michael, um, the librarian here, uh, for the county at our, our local library or our branch. And so I've asked to be invited to their monthly meetings, friends of the library, just to get a better understanding about what's going on over there and the programming that they have. Um, I'll be at the rotary meeting tomorrow at lunch, so at two six, uh, on two sixteen. And then we do have some volunteers helping Ben and, um, Matt out with the gazebo roof project at Greenhorn. So that has started, so.
Yeah, interesting, we're talking about it and the person that complained about it's gone.
Absolutely, yeah.
He doesn't realize this is the second gazebo that we built.
Yeah.
So the fact that he, that the public was saying that we just built a gazebo and left it, that's not true. Remember the first one we built? Okay, we had one before, remember it was up, it was elevated. And then people complained, you know, that disabled people couldn't get up to it, so we made this one more flat. And I'm glad to see that you're working on the roof, it needs it.
Yeah, and Steve is actually the volunteer helping us out with this project, so, uh, onto the next slide, sir. So here are the home key options, this is a grant outside of PLHA, there are a number of different grants for shelters. And so you could see here, I believe this was Pomona, and they have a campus, but you'll see in the background of this picture, it is a giant cloth tent, lo and behold. And so this is an option with home key funding that's outside of PLHA, so if we wanted to seek something like this out, obviously not to this scale, uh, by any stretch of the imagination, but that is a permanent tent and that is a permanent shelter, and I think they take two hundred and six beds in that location. They could max out at four hundred under an emergency. But that is part of the home key granting system, and so that is an option on the table. If we wanted to partner with the county and then seek a partner to run a shelter, either somewhere in the county or in specifically in Wyrica. Uh, there are plenty of options available for that, if, if the board of supervisors and the city council would like that to happen, and that's, I believe that the city council would like to explore that option. That is also an item I would suggest has to be run through the COC because that's where all the agencies come together. It's not as easy as just putting this up, you, and the county would not necessarily staff this. They would need a partnership with a nonprofit, so this is one of those options, and I know this kind of touches on what you were discussing earlier. If you can move on to the next slide, please, Arthur. And so this is one that's extremely feasible, and so this is basically in El Monte, they purchased two motels right next to each other, uh, roughly for both around ten million dollars, I believe, with this home key money, and then they went in and, uh, they renovated them and they turned them into a shelter. So you get a, in this instance, in El Monte, this particular, the, both of these motels were seeing high activity constantly, police being there. Uh, talk about everything we talked about tonight, children being abused. So people are out performing these acts now anyway, and now they have control over the system. They fixed a piece of blight in their community because they were able to use this funding to renovate these locations. Obviously, they had to work out an agreement on the T O T and all of that. Um, but this option is extremely feasible if there is a palette by this council for this type of thing. We could flush this out with Sarah Kellard in the county and possibly get long-term uh, a long-term starting point on a long-term shelter, I guess.
So with with that, you know, they've done that in Mount, uh, in Medford and National Area, they've turned, they've did, they've done the same with with Ponchatoum Key. And, uh.
Was it successful? Was it successful, though, that's my concern.
They just got it done, actually, most of, most of those facilities have only been up and running for a certain, not a very long period of time, so I. Yeah, to get them all retro, all the rooms retrofitted to, to utilize them. Some of them were actually brought through money from the fires too, that they were actually able to utilize some of the fire, well, the money, the federal money that was brought through the fires for emergency purposes, and so they're able to use it to that way too, so. There's definitely, there, they had some other options, but yeah, through the, through the home key, like you're saying, there is definitely the money there. But we'd have to, like you were saying, we need to team up with, with the county and and other entities to be able to run that facility, to be able to do that. And then we got to look at options, if if that's something that, you know, the council and everybody wants to go with, which would be feasible. We have to figure out where that would be, because if you're buying a motel, obviously you're not going to want to go down to that in town and buy Motel Six because they're not going to sell, um, so. It'd have to be more towards this city town, yeah, um, so that's, that's the other things, and looking into that. Uh, trying to find the proper motel that would be feasible, obviously, one is, uh, was a mountain view or whatever, but that's not a, actually a feasible one, even though it'd probably be the most practical one for us to buy, if we were to do that, it's too close to the, to the high school, so we wouldn't want to do that. Would get too much feedback, uh, what was it, Grants Pass was trying to do that, the community, um, yeah, did not look at it very what, looked at it very nicely, so it did not, did not work.
Well, this, this is also in the state is a political hot potato because the governor of the state of California has pushed this, this is his baby, and it's the hoteliers that have backed him with hundreds of thousands of campaign dollars, and so it's, uh, some see it, I'm not, and I'm not, some see it as his way of taking some of these in the, in the urban areas, getting, taking these hotels off their hands that they can't sell, so, I mean, it's still a great, it looks great, but it, the other thing is eighteen months, I think, is a quick turnaround on these, I think you're looking at, it's, it's, projects can take a while once you buy them. And then you got like, Wa- Wemo would have been the logical one until they redid it, because Wemo's got place for trailers. It's got a, it's got the independent rooms, it's got the hotel. You know, so.
And I think, just to touch on a couple of things you guys mentioned, uh, Half Moon Bay, uh, San Mateo County came into Half Moon Bay, which is relatively affluent area, and partnered with the city of Half Moon Bay, and they did in fact build one of these or purchased one of these right next to two very, uh, high-priced preparatory schools, and they just did it. They just said, this is the right thing to do, it was a ton of community outreach, but there certainly was a level of, of folks that did not support that, so, you know, the anything is on the table, and the turnaround time is mandated to be very quick. I think it's actually possibly nine months where you have got to get people into this space. They, the state will not allow you to lollygag on this, so if you do sign, sign up for something like this, you are renovating as quickly as possible and actually putting people in the renovated location when you're down on the other end renovating the rest of the the motel, it's a requirement, so.
Oh, could you turn your mic on?
I think they're still renovating the one in Ashland, and they've got people living in the far end and renovating the near. Thank you, Don.
And I'm not, I'm not seeking any direction, this is just my staff report, so, that's all I have, folks.
Thank you, Jason. Does anybody else have any staff reports? I'm sure everybody wants to get out of here, but. I, I know Chief has a lot of good news. We're done.
You mean, not at ten thirty?
His wife's going to be like, what is going on? All right, well, then I will go to city councilman's reports, uh, start off with you, Joan.
It's too late, it's too late, um, I'll just give you something brief, um, so on, uh, February seventh, so we had I was on the board meeting for the Northern California Division, Sacramento Valley Division Board Meeting um, for the League of California Cities, and I wanted to let you all know that the next face-to-face meeting is going to be March twenty fifth in Folsom, uh, we're going to be discussing fire mitigation, uh, plans and funding, also Office of Emergency Services, um, funding and, uh, and fire mitigation, critical infrastructure investment and sustain, sustainment, possibly, um, the National League of Cities update. Uh, because we now, as our, our division, we now have a representative on the National League of Cities Board in Washington D.C., and so he'll give an update on that. Educate, also have a education for cities on local control groups. Um, uh, anyway, I'm not sure exactly the details of that, and, um, then they're going to be in Mount Shasta on May twentieth. So we're going to talk about, um, housing affordability, um, broadband, um, and those kind of local issues that we're all dealing with here, and then uh, they, they are talking about changing the date for July eighth, that's supposed to be in South Lake Tahoe, that one's, uh, organics and fleet emissions regulations. Grants for planning and, um, preparation for hazardous waste mitigation plans that we have to, the state of California requires that we have. Um, and division, uh, well, and then our division elections too, and somebody from here should run for that. Nobody from here has been on that board since I was president, so I know I tried to get Debbie to do it, so, anyway. You could possibly, you could possibly, and then the annual conference for the California League of Cities is, uh, in Long Beach on September seventh. For all of you to know, so, uh, there's a lot more stuff that we discussed, and I gave the annual report because, um, I'm on the state board now, and the state, next state board meeting is the end of this month, and that's going to be in Walnut Creek. Okay, and I had a local transportation commission meeting, and I'm not going to tell you all, everything we discussed with that much material. We had a pool meeting, uh, that Jason talked about, and then I also, on the eleventh, that was the tenth and the eleventh, I had a Housing Community and Economic Development, uh, Policy Committee meeting that was online, uh, on Zoom, uh, and so that was nine AM until it was supposed to be over at noon, it got over about twelve thirty, twelve forty, and it was jam-packed with legislation that's coming down, and one of the things we discussed, well, it's one of the things we voted on tonight, but we can talk about that later. Anyway, I'm not going to bore you with the rest of it, tomorrow is Rotary, you're all invited, it's at Ming's in the back room. Jason's going to be there.
Yes.
We're going to get an update from Wyrica High School on all the good programs that are going out there, and we're going to be having our students of the month. We're going to be honoring them with their Rotary plaques.
All right, cool. All right, Mr. McCoy. Yep, yes, thank you. Absolutely. Who's talking?
Am I not on? Sorry about that, I want to thank both chiefs for a great job, particularly Jerry, thank you for whoever got the, uh, Hyrum Page road area cleaned, that is amazing, no worry about forest fire, out of fire this year, thank you very much.
It looks awesome. Mr. Milton?
I'm going to pass tonight.
I did go to a LAFCO meeting, first one we've had since last May, was kind of like starting all over again. Uh, we still have a, uh, member-at-large position available to anyone who wants to submit a letter of interest to them. And next week I have a call your meeting, that's it, thank you.
I'm done. Well, I'm going to go, I'll keep it short, I did the PIT, we didn't get, haven't got the numbers back yet, just about did. I spent all weekend entering them in the app, so of all the, uh, great participants and helping out, thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Paul, thank you, Joan, thank everybody that, uh, participated in the point-in-time count, because there was actually a lot of numbers. We actually got quite a few down in Mount Shasta too, believe it or not, yeah. Yeah, they were real busy, because there was only two, we only had two volunteers because of, because of COVID, people ran off and didn't want to help. And, and here locally, we struggled too with the point in time, because, uh, um, at the county level, the, at behavioral health and stuff, they had an outbreak there. So we lost a bunch, yeah, we lost a bunch of volunteers there, so they struggled getting their numbers. Um, Crew, Crew Tribe actually housed, um, oh, probably, probably twenty individuals to them that they, they sponsored and paid for. Uh, for, um, they, they took and put people up in motels, vouchers, yeah, motel vouchers, and there's probably at least twenty individuals that they put up. Or, and some of them, I think, are still in, in the. Yeah. All individuals from all over, yeah, so, that was good, um, I want to thank Chief Gilwin and, uh, police. They, uh, they, uh, arrested an individual that's, um, getting catalytic converters out of peoples and and one of them happened, one of them happened to be mine, unfortunately, but. Yep. Unfortunately. Yeah, unfortunately, there was a number of catalytic converters were stolen, and you don't realize how expensive those things are, so you have to replace them. That one off of, we're, unfortunately, it was off our Pathfinder that, uh, our old Pathfinder that we're, we're donating to a vet that, uh, and unfortunately, that, um, catalytic converter off of that one is fifteen hundred dollars. Yeah, good old state of California has to put their tag on it, and when you put their tag on it, it jacks up, there is a Dodge. Um, that got its catalytic converter stolen, and it was like three thousand dollars. Yeah, it's ridiculous, and these, these criminals know how to get, make the money, unfortunately, but I thank you for getting the guy. And, um, unfortunately, this individual is an individual that's been busted numerous times for other things. Hopefully, we can get them locked up this time, hopefully the DA pushes hard and keeps them locked up, because because this guy's bad news, he's been busted numerous times, at least, at least I, that's what I've heard who he was to the grapevine, so, um, not good. But anyways, um, that's all I got, um, thank you guys for all coming, we got to go into closed session, unfortunately. So, we are going into closed session, media injured.